...council meeting of the city of McMinnville. And we open our-
Please repeat that, we can't hear you.
We really can't hear you very well. You're gonna have to use the mic.
He has a microphone.
I'm through your mouth. I'm just trying to help.
Okay, is that better? Okay. We welcome you to the January 24th, 2017 city council meeting of the city of McMinnville. And we open our council meeting. We call this meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance by Alan Rudin leading us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Rudin. We would remind you that this meeting is being recorded by K O Y C and M C M this evening and would ask everyone to please silent or turn off your telephones, your cell phones, so that you wouldn't interrupt our proceedings. If you do need to take a call, if you could go out into the lobby and, and take your calls there. We are to the point in our meeting where we have an invitation to citizens for public comment and we would have any member of the audience that would like to provide comment to come up and speak, to sign in. There's a few things that we're not able to, to talk about. Number one, any topic that's already on the agenda, we need to wait to that part of our program. Any matter in litigation, any quasi judicial land matter, land use matter, or any matter that's scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. So with that being said, anyone that would like to come and testify before the council this evening, raise a hand. Okay, we'll go with, we'll just go with that individual and the one behind. So come in, state your name and write, sign in.
Just to clarify, there is a public hearing scheduled tonight for the Bag It Better Matter that will be coming later in the agenda, if that's what you're here for.
That is on the agenda, so that's not-
I am Jack Reed and I live over here on southeast Queenborough Court. And I was here, what, last year, about three times in the council meeting here, trying to get something done about the drug house at 1630? Nothing's been done about it. That place has been without water and been without electricity since last June. There's anywhere from two to four people living in that house at a time. The SWAT team come in there and busted the damn door down. So what do they do now? They crawl through the windows. They dump their species out in the yard and I would like to know, as a taxpayer, how much longer we have to put up with this crap over there? There's nothing being done about it. There's no electricity, no water. Where do they go to the bathroom at? You know where? Out alongside the house, in the yard? They can't go to the park no more because it's all locked up. She goes back and forth, she's in and out of jail constantly. It's a swinging door for her. And the people that come in and out of that house every day, and I'm talking 24/7, two to six people every day climb in and out of them windows, throwing jars of stuff out the front window. Come on, they can't, don't have a toilet, they have no water. Why does the city of McMinnville allow somebody to live there? Wells Fargo come out there and took one look at that house, and this come from the homeowner herself that told me this. Wells Fargo come out, because it's been in foreclosure for over five years. They come out to change the locks on it in August, took one look at that place and said, "We don't want nothing to do with it." And so, all the homeowners in there, in that neighborhood, are stuck with that. And there's no reason why the city of McMinnville cannot condemn that damn place and board it up. Because I guarantee you, if it was your neighbor, you guys would have done something about it a long time ago. Now, something needs to be done. They were gonna draft up an ordinance. Yeah, right, that's a joke. There've been no ordinance brought up about it. I got a goddamn ticket two weeks ago for parking in front of my house for $35.
Easy, easy.
And I have to pay it. Because I'm a taxpayer, she ain't, she's, she's nothing. Get rid of the, the problem, please. The city of McMinnville needs to do something about it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Jack. We'll get back in, in contact with you. David, do you have any, any thoughts at this point?
No.
Oh yeah, nobody's ever got any thought about it. Like I say, if it was your neighbor and you had to look at it out your front door every damn day, you guys would do something about it.
Jack, may I just say that I know that our police department works diligently on a lot of these code enforcement issues. We have about a 98% success rate with all of, all code enforcement issues that come before us. And I absolutely am compassionate to the fact that, the fact that you're in the 2% does not make you feel any better about it. The fact that we haven't been able to overcome this issue in your neighborhood and with your specific neighbor. But know that it is not falling on deaf ears, that, that that 2% retain, retains the focus of not only the police department, but the council for the house in your neighborhood and in the other homes and other neighborhoods where there are problem houses that for one reason or another, we legally have trouble bringing them into compliance. But it is the goal of the city and the McMinnville Police Department to bring all homes into compliance and for you to not have these frustrations.
What you don't understand is they don't have no water, electricity in there since last June.
I, I do understand, I'm, I'm not speaking, I can't speak specifically to your situation because each situation where there's a problem bringing a home into compliance, it has its own, there's a, there is a reason that that house has not come into compliance, but it is not because of a, a lack of work on the part of the city or the police department at trying to do that. Sometimes there are a lot of reasons that come up that may not be obvious, that make it very difficult to bring a specific property into compliance. So, your property is noted and, and it, and the city will continue to work towards helping you and your neighborhood overcome that issue. Believe me or not.
I've never seen anything done.
Mr. Reed-
And it's been going on for eight to 10 months.
Mr. Reed, my understanding is that you've had multiple conversations with McMinnville Police Department about this and-
You bet I have.
-I seem to recall when you've been here previously, you've praised the work of the city of McMinnville through its police department and the parks department in coming out there and addressing the issues in Thompson Park-
Yes, I have.
And at Queensborough. Now, I understand that not everything has been done that you would like to see done, that you would like to see the city government come in and take over somebody's private property-
Private property?
And board it up. But we don't own it.
You may not own it, but you can, you can condemn it if you wanted to.
Okay.
They've said that.
It's owned by the woman who lives there. And I understand that she's in and out of jail because the city is taking the situation seriously.
It's been in foreclosure for over five years, for God's sakes.
But not by the city, by Wells Fargo. So, what I'm gonna offer again is, we're happy to come out and talk to you, to the neighborhood group, and I thought we were making progress. This comes as a little bit of a surprise because this is, I, I haven't heard from you for three or four months and now you're here. So let's get together-
Okay, do I need to come back every other week, or twice a month?
Let's get together and talk about it again. If there are new issues that are going on that you don't think the police department's aware of, we're happy to come out and talk to you about it again.
Well, new issues, when you consider dumping your species out in the front yard, what the hell does that tell you? Like I say, you folks don't understand. They have no facilities in that house. They cannot go to the bathroom. They don't have no water.
I understand, I've heard that.
So, where do they go?
Let's get together and talk about it. Let's get together and talk about it.
Let's get together.
Because we're not gonna solve anything here yelling back and forth at each other.
All right, when do we get together?
How's tomorrow morning look?
Pardon me?
How's tomorrow morning look?
Not tomorrow morning?
How does tomorrow morning look for you? You wanna come by my office at 9 o'clock? I'm right next door.
You bet.
Okay, I haven't seen you there yet, but I'm right next door in the White House. Come by and see me at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, we'll talk about it.
9 o'clock.
Does that work?
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
We have another hand?
No, I'm just gonna wait.
Okay. Any other public comment for this evening? Go ahead.
The name is Isabel Flores. I'm the neighbor to, to Ann, the house they're talking about. Yesterday, one of the kids, I call them kids, they're about 19, 20, he came around the house and my front window, because the window side to sit inside, relieved himself. It was dusk, I couldn't exactly make out his face, but there was four of them, there were three of them inside, he relieved himself. I yelled at him. He turned around and gave me a finger. Then, he didn't do nothing, just finished, walked around like if there's nothing at all, like Jack was saying. And it's worse for me because I'm, I'm the neighbor. I have to put up with all their, every ear, their leaves and everything fall on their trees. They never pick them up, but if you go there, you'll see it's gone because it blows into my yard. And I pick them up. I pick up, I don't mind on my property, but when I still have to start picking up all the leaves because of, they don't pick them up. And they've done this for years. That's all I wanted to say about it. And I, I would like to be-
You're welcome, you're welcome to be with me tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock as well. Or another time if that works for you.
Probably another time because I have to go down and donate some money to the Indians at the Chinook Wince.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'll call one more time. Any other public comment? Thank you. At this point, I would like to present a proclamation recognizing one of our former city councilors, Councilor Dick Wendell, who passed away about a month and a half ago. And I think before I read the proclamation, we have a esteemed former city manager with us tonight, Kent Taylor. And Kent has, had worked with Dick for many years and I think he had an opportunity to meet and talk with Ed Gormly and they had some thoughts to do. So Kent, if you'd come in and introduce yourself and sign in and share some thoughts before I do the proclamation.
Well, I don't, I don't know about esteemed, but I'm not steamed either, so.
Good point.
It's a, it's a sad, it's a sad occasion, but a happy occasion, because I know Dick's in a better place. But I wanna thank you on behalf of myself and former Mayor Gormly, who's traveling out of state and unable to be here. He asked me to convey some thoughts to you that came to his mind about Dick. They're not that long, but I'll read, read over them fairly quickly. So these are from former Mayor Ed Gormly regarding former planning commissioner and city councilor Dick Wendell. I want to thank the council for their care and courtesy in recognizing Dick Wendell tonight. I know that Mary Ann, his wife, and Beth, his daughter, deeply appreciate your thoughtfulness. Dick and I first met when he was appointed to the planning commission in 1983. He was very dedicated, conscientious, and extremely considerate of the public in his public service role. He was one of those volunteers that clearly knew he could make a difference and that he was a steward of the public trust. He served from 1983 to 1990, and I believe was also the chairman at one time. Some of you will know when Dick served on the city council and interviewed people for the planning commission, he always took time to explain the judge and jury aspect as it applied to the term quasi judicial. Our friendship grew and I got to know him well. With an opening on the city council, I asked him to run for the office. Once Dick was elected, we spent the next 14 years working closely together. He was my confidant on a lot of issues. He, Kent, Cliff Ross, the former city attorney, and I spent many hours working on lots of great issues and projects for the city. For years, I saw him almost daily as he usually came by my office. Dick was deeply religious and he would often have fun talking, we would often have fun talking about him growing up in Philadelphia in a Catholic neighborhood. I would kid him about the Catholic influence in his life, telling that that had made him a great Christian. Those of you that knew Dick knew he was very conservative. And I would, I would second that statement. If I wanted to get a rise out of him, all I would have to do would be to bring up Bill Clinton's name and his face would start to turn red. He usually had something smart comment to shut me up. In many ways, he was my right hand. He volunteered to serve on the Parkway Committee when the meeting schedule got to be heavy, sparing me from attending one more meeting. Our deal was that he would represent the city and that anything I thought should, he, he should be involved in, I would attend. It worked great. I visited Dick about a year after he moved to Florida. I spent a couple of days with him. He took me to see the manatees at their breeding grounds, which was close to his home. He also took me to the best Philly Steak Sandwich Cafe south of Philadelphia. We continued our friendship and I talked on a regular basis, wanting to know what all was going on. He came back to McMinnville a few times and one of those was for my retirement party from the mayor's office. I spoke to him about a week prior to his illness. He had health issues but seemed to be doing okay. He was active in his church doing an outreach for the homeless and extremely active with his local Republican Party. I was in a grocery store when I got his wife's call that he had suffered a stroke. It was the Monday before Thanksgiving. I was in shock as I had planned on trying to see him in January while I had a meeting in Orlando. I was taken aback when she called me the afternoon of December 9th to tell me that Dick had passed away. I was driving to Portland with candy and just couldn't believe it. He wasn't much older than me. I'm saddened to lose this friend. He always kept me in stitches over his read on the Democrats, especially the last year with President Obama, who he thought was even worse than Clinton, and Florida politics. I will miss those long calls, often when I was driving. I know he's in a better place now. He lived his life as a God fearing person. I know I'm a better person for having known and worked with him and that he is one of the many people who have helped make McMinnville be a wonderful place to live. And that's from Ed Gormly, former mayor. And I would certainly second the last sentence of Ed's remarks that McMinnville is a better place for all the contributions that Dick made, both on the planning commission and the council and his volunteer work. Ed touched on a number of things I would have touched on and I'll only add a few. The first thing, the things that came to my mind in addition were, were that Dick valued integrity and he expected that everyone in the city organization would value the same thing. He was a good listener. He was a good listener not only to his fellow councilors, but also the city staff and the public. One significant capital project that came to my mind that he had a real love for and a passion for and played a very supportive and key role in was the, the construction of the water reclamation facility and related improvements that actually continue on to this day. In fact, we've even expanded the plant, that he was instrumental in getting built. Dick, as Ed indicated, as you can imagine, had a good sense of humor. I was talking to Walt Gowell before the meeting, we were talking about Dick. And I think we, we said he took his politics, Republican politics, very seriously, but he didn't take it personally. And I, I think that's something we can all learn from in 2017. He loved to talk about Penn State football with me, which was an immediate bond for both of us. On several occasions, he returned from the East Coast on sales trips or visiting family and he'd bring back bumper stickers and stuff. So we had a lot of fun about that. Last but not least, Dick practiced humility. And I think a number of people in this room have heard me beat that mantra that I think that's really the, humility is really the birthplace for a lot of other attributes that make for good people generally, but certainly elected officials and city staff that work with the public. So I think that's a, for me, that would be an overriding memory of Dick, Dick Wendell is just his, he had passion, he'd tell you when he felt strongly about something, but he was also a very humble guy. He didn't have a big, a big head at all. And if you wanted to know in detail and wanted to have a 45-minute conversation of how you got from Dulles International Airport to Baltimore, Dick was the guy. Thank you for the opportunity and I'm glad you're doing this and thank you.
Any other comments from anyone that would like to share on Dick Wendell before I read the proclamation?
Whatever Walt Gowell says tonight, I oppose it.
If I may, before I read the proclamation, just a thought from my perspective, I agree with everything that Kent and Ed put down and talked about. But the thing that I remember as a young volunteer, starting my civic career out on the Budget Committee 24 years ago, Dick was very respectful of the volunteers and he mentored and he just put a hand around and, and thanked those that were giving in a meaningful way to the city. So I do remember that. Well, if I may, we have a proclamation from the city of McMinnville. Whereas Dick Wendell was born on April 6, 1941, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to the late George Stewart and Edna Mae Wendell. And whereas Dick married Mary Ann Nunmaker on June 15, 1963, and shared 53 wonderful years of marriage together. Whereas Dick went on to become a sales manager for the largest dental equipment manufacturer in the world. And whereas Dick proudly served his country as a member of the naval reserve, air reserves. And whereas Dick had a passion for serving his community. And whereas Dick began his service to the city of McMinnville in 1983, serving as a planning commissioner until 1990. And whereas Dick served as a city counselor from 1990 through June 2004 and held the position of council president for a number of terms. And whereas Dick further served the community by volunteering in many ways, including through his very active participation as a member of the Lions Club. And whereas Dick was an active member of the local Chamber of Commerce and never more active than during Turkey Rama, where he was integral to the entire festival, but most particularly where he was in charge of the turkey barbecue, acquiring the turkeys, preparing the pits, cooking the turkeys, selling them, serving them, cleaning up, and filling in the barbecue pits at the end of the day. And whereas Dick was also faithfully, faithfully in his church and was a member of the board of the Church of the Nazarene. And whereas Dick served on the Yan Hill County Parkway Committee for years, helping to guide that process. And whereas Dick was one of the original people who brought hospice to McMinnville. And whereas Dick had an amazing ability to fix anything and a treasure trove of stories about his adventure. And whereas Dick had an encyclopedia knowledge of everything under the sun. Now therefore, I, Scotty Hill, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim January 24th, 2017 as Dick Wendell Day. In the city of McMinnville and urge citizens to reflect on the, the passion, the leadership of his caring and, this caring and community minded former counselor. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 24th day of January 2017. Scotty Hill, Mayor. And so, that's our tribute to Dick. Although he's not here, if we could just recognize Dick and, and for all that he had, he had done, we will be sending this proclamation to Mary Ann by mail so that she can display that and just get a sense of how much we love and appreciate all that Dick did on behalf of the city. So, thank you. We now are ready to start a public hearing and I forgot to indicate, but on that back table, we have a sign in sheet for those that would like to participate in the public hearing. Depending how many we have, we may limit your comments so that we can hear everyone in a timely manner. So on the back table, there's a sign up sheet for anyone that would like to participate in the open hearing that we are about to, the public hearing that we are about to, to have. We're going to start this public session. And I, I will open this public session. And this is on Bag It Better, the draft ordinance for single-use plastic carryout bags. And so, what we would like to do in opening this public hearing, ask for the zero waste people representing this organization to come up and give us a quick report. And then we will hear from those that would like to testify. So, zero waste, whoever would be here, Ramsey, if you're representing with a few of your, your individuals. And just give us a quick report as to where we're at and then-
Okay.
-we'll start our public hearing.
Ramsey McPhillips, McPhillips Road here in McMinnville. So, as you know, we have spent the latter part of the last year organizing to this point of an ordinance. We've contacted, we believe, every major big outlet where there are single-use plastic bags in use several times. We have gone to other communities where, the other five communities where the single-use ban is in place and asked those retailers and citizens and bureaucracies what has transpired. And to wrap it all up sort of in a nutshell, today I redid my calls to the city managers and to many of the grocery outlets in the five communities that have passed a ban, which as you remember are McMinnville, Eugene, Ashland, Portland, and now Forest Grove. Overwhelmingly, without exception, every grocery store manager and every city manager said that the outcome of the ban was positive, that there was a period of transition, but that by and large, they were very in favor of it. And the two things that they brought up that were universal in those remarks were that it was good for business and saved money. And that it was great for the environment and for the image of both the retailers and the communities in which the ban was in place.
Can you expand on that, good for business and saved money?
Yes, so basically, it comes down to the five cent I'm charged. So right now, every grocery store has a cost for plastic bags. If they are going to be then charging five cents for paper bags, remember, that's only for people who forget to bring in their cloth bag. That cost goes away of buying plastic bags. So in essence, the cost for transporting garbage, or transporting, I'm sorry, another topic. Freudian slip. Transporting the groceries out to your car is zeroed out. And so the five cent is not meant for the retailer to make money on their, you know, customers, it's just to cover the cost. And so, that's what, that's what they, they said. Also, every single bag that is in circulation for the big box stores now has very beautiful graphics on it, their website, a slogan and their logo, that you really notice. Whereas before, on a plastic bag, you didn't really notice it that much. Some stores have been clever enough to pick a color, you know, that everyone identifies with grocery outlet or, you know, with Ross and, and that's really good. But I have to say that there's an upside to the business for branding and for, you know, advertising on these paper bags that they're all now manufacturing. Also, I heard a great quote today that I wanted to pass on, that Oregon is a lumber state, not a petroleum state. So that meaning that paper bags are made from trees. And actually, paper bags are not made from trees. Paper bags are made from recycled paper. They're not, we no longer cut down trees for paper bags. But of course, petroleum is the product that is in the plastic. Do you have any questions?
So that's a quick update as to where, what's brought us here? Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts?
We're just really, it was really fun to, to go about the community and, and ask everyone and get everyone involved and I hope that we did a good job. We tried to go mom to pop all the way through and, and we truly believe that, that the consensus is that the ordinance would be a good thing for the city. And there's some, there are some things that are negative, which I'm sure will be spoken about tonight, but they're not insurmountable. And given the consensus of the five communities that have already done it, it seems like we're not imparting anything unjust or obtrusive to the community.
Thank you. Before we start the public hearing, I just want to make mention that we have received ten written statements that are to be put into the record tonight. And Melissa has those and we have that up on the dais with the council individuals. We're not going to read those per se. Some of them are fairly lengthy, but we know that those are a part of the record.
We have read them, but they're not going to be read into the record tonight.
Yeah, we have read them, but we're not going to read it for the audience at this
There is one thing that came up. I spoke to the owners of Grocery Outlet. I think they're one of the letters that maybe has been submitted. And she detailed what was in the letter and her concerns. And so I called the Grocery Outlets in these five communities where the, the ban has already passed. And so her, her concerns were that there would need be a conversation between the customers who had a, a card for either food stamps or for WIC. And that that might be both difficult for the cashier who didn't want to bring up a subject about someone's, you know, on a, on a food stamp or something like that. It would slow down the process of getting people in and out of the store. And there was going to be some confusion about who was entitled to five cents or not for the charge for the five cent bag. Well, it turns out that SNAP, which is the food service, a food stamp program, does not have a mechanism for exempting the five cents. So people on food stamps pay the five cents. They either bring, hopefully they'll learn to bring a cloth bag like everyone else. But there is not an exemption because it's a computerized card and it gets confusing. They wanted to be consistent and so they decided rather than to exempt everyone, which isn't everyone, it would just be them, it wouldn't be the whole, all the people coming into the stores, that they would include them in the five cent. So if you are on, you will be charged five cents. That being said, the, all the retailers that we spoke to about this, or that I spoke to today said, you know, if someone comes in and they're on SNAP or they, they question it, the customer's always right. We just let them have a bag for free. It's, it's, it's that it's very, very rare that that conversation comes up. And we've instructed, you know, all of our checkers just to give them a bag. It's not a big deal. And in fact, that was sort of generic throughout. If it's not systemic, if it's once, you know, a couple of times a week and someone comes down and argue, they just let them go. They're, they're not, you know, going to argue with it. Then WIC is the program for pregnant women. That one does have either or, you can charge or not charge the five cent to those people. They have a card also. It, it can't be done with a computer, so it's not automatic or not automatic. It would have to be a conversation with the, the checker and the person who is on WIC. And Grocery Outlet is not on WIC. None of the stores are. It's not everywhere. So it's a patchwork of, but that is a concern that you'll have to deal with in this ordinance to decide whether you make it universal, that everyone is charged five cents for a paper bag. And remember, that's not everyone who comes to the store, that's just people who come in who don't have a cloth bag, right? Or whether you want to exempt them.
Any questions from councillor to?
That was, I think Cheryl at Grocery Outlet specified that she wanted, just to make it easy for the checker and, and consistent. She was hoping that even people who were on some sort of help with their groceries would still be charged the five cents, whether it was WIC or, or SNAP. It just, she felt that personally, I'm speaking for her, that she asked me to say this, that, you know, it's a behavioral change for everyone and that five cents should be charged for everyone.
So under our ordinance, Davy, correct me if I'm wrong, we use the term shall provide reusable bags or recyclable paper, paper bags at no cost. So it's not an option in those cases for, for WIC and, and for the?
And for SNAP.
SNAP as well, so they, we have the exemption written into ours so that?
In the draft ordinance, it's, it's up for consideration, yes. That was included in based on the conversation during the work session at the last council meeting.
And weren't there other communities that did have those exemptions?
Yes, Portland. Portland is the other, is the, one of the, the four that doesn't have. And then Forest Grove is optional.
No, they, I think all the communities except Portland have a WIC exemption. None of them mentioned SNAP. I thought SNAP, you could not buy anything but, except for foodstuffs with SNAP benefits.
And that, yeah, so they're not going to, the question came up then, should SNAP pay those five cents, right? And because, because that's on the credit card.
And how has WIC dealt with it with the city of Portland? Does it go back to what you said or then there, there's a forced conversation between the cashier and the customer?
WIC can be a decision by the, yeah, between the, the town that has the ordinance and the WIC hold, card holder. And so it's, it's up to whether you want to or not.
WIC is usually done with a paper vouchers and so you can, the cashier would see that. It's not, it's running my card blindly, so they would know.
Right. And once again, we didn't hear anything from any of the shop owners that there was any sort of conflict with that. It was just nothing, because we, I was really worried that we were setting something up that the retailers would have an issue with and they were all seemed to be fine with it. It just doesn't come out.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I just wanted to note in putting the, the draft ordinance together for the packet to get it out, there was one item that was discussed during the work session that ended up getting omitted from the draft and I wanted to, to bring that to the council's attention before the hearing began. There was discussion during the work session about a phase-in period for larger stores versus the smaller stores. That provision was inadvertently omitted from this draft of the ordinance. So as I recall the discussion from the council work session, was that the ordinance would be effective in six months from the date of passage for stores that were, large stores that are ten thousand square foot or greater.
Meaning they had to be in compliance within six months?
They had to be in compliance within six months and that smaller stores under ten thousand square feet in size would have one year in order to get into compliance. So that, that was not in this draft. I just wanted to make sure that that, it was our intent to include that in the draft that was brought back to the council in two weeks, but so that everybody had the benefit of knowing that that was going, that, that was intended to be in the draft ordinance so you can testify to that if you want to. I wanted to raise that, raise that issue.
In addition to that, is the hardship included in that?
Yes, the hardship, there could be an extension if there was an application for hardship. So if there's an additional period of time necessary, there'd be a process for the retailer to apply for hardship waiver for up to one additional year.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So Ramsey, you, you live pretty close to the landfill where most of these passive bags go. You know, I was doing some contemplating today. Portland's banned this, the bags in their area. And most of our garbage that's taken to that landfill comes from Portland metro area, which no longer has the plastic bags. So is it safe to say that a majority of the bags that were seeing a problem out there are coming from Yamhill County and are our problem?
So I'm, I will take this as tepidly as I possibly can. Because we're really not, our organization, as you know, is not really, take, does not take up the subject of Riverbend landfill, but that's about the expansion of Riverbend landfill. The landfill is there, so I will speak to the plastic bags that are currently going there regardless of the expansion. Did I do all right?
Oh, good.
All right. So as of February first, the flow of garbage going to Riverbend landfill from the metro region is going to be diverted. And that is primarily Washington County and Forest Grove from the Forest Grove Transfer Station. So no, we, we sort of mush metro and Portland together because it's metro cited in Portland, but it actually is the three county region. And so the actual, most of the garbage coming from Portland metro comes from Washington County.
I see.
And that is now being diverted away. But more important than that, that Washington County garbage includes a lot of Forest Grove. And Forest Grove is now one of the five cities who has gotten rid of the bags. And so, yes, so the, right now, as of February first, most of the garbage going into the landfill will be our own.
One addition to that, if I read the Portland ordinance correctly, their ordinance applies only to groceries and food providers. So there are a lot of stores in Portland that potentially could use the plastic t-shirt bags and would get into their trash.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, one more. You brought up plastic t-shirt bags. Have you guys talked to JCPenney's locally? That'd be our biggest retailer that would use that type of bag.
Yes, one of our members surveyed, we were asked at the last meeting to survey some of the department stores and we made a pretty complete survey of the stores in town. And so specifically, you wanted to know, do, what kind of bags do they use?
Yeah, what would be their alternative? Because they have huge plastic bags.
Yes, most of the department stores use a non-t-shirt type bag. They're a larger bag, they're a heavier bag and they have the cut-out type handles. Personally, in the stores I surveyed, I did not see any that I would have called thicker than the so-called two-point-two-five-mill version, which we think is too thin to qualify as truly reusable. But there are stores, there are quite a few stores in town using that quality of bags.
Did they give you any feedback as far as? Ramsey was talking about surveying all the stores, like what was their feedback?
So we all, who amongst us took Pennies? Was there someone who talked to Pennies?
Pam, Pam did.
Meaning that they were, they would have to change to a thicker bag or go to, go to paper.
Yeah, but they didn't give you any negative, like overwhelming negative feedback?
The, the big stores like Pennies and other department-type stores are generally corporate-run stores. And so you don't get negatives from them because corp, the corporate infrastructure helps them through this. And they just work off their inventory and unused bags they can send back to corporate for other use.
So for instance, I, I'll be surprised tonight if there is someone from one of the large corporations testifying tonight. A, because they've been told by their corporations that they shouldn't. B, they leave it up to the city and they follow the city rules, so it's up to you to decide for them if this should be enacted or not. And then third, they're very busy. We've tried to get them to come, but they, they just seem to think it's okay because they know it's happening. You know, all of California went January first and then all these other, there's JCPenney's and these other five communities and they're fine.
So as a continuation of that thought and, you know, I'm very grateful that you've gone out and you've done this legwork and you've talked to the grocers and you've gotten a, a thumbs up from the grocers, so to speak. And I'm inferring that you also have gotten this thumbs up from Pennies or Ross or the other department stores. Who have you not gotten a thumbs up from?
Individuals who have concerns, which I assume maybe some of them will be here tonight and if they're not, I can certainly tick off those concerns. They, they generally are personally use of the recycled bag.
I mean of the, of retailers, of people that are using them for their businesses. What businesses have given you a negative response to the proposed ban?
Well, there were several businesses that had just made large purchases of plastic bags and they said, there's no way in a year I'm going to work this off. So they may be eligible for the hardship extension of the rollout. So that, that is a concern. And the smaller stores, the convenience stores, and we've always known that that's going to be an issue with their customer base and with those owners. And, and we're going to have to work closely with them to get past this. But they're also, a lot of them are corporate, Circle K, 7-Eleven, they're corporate and they should have some corporate support for getting through this.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have fourteen individuals that have signed to give us testimony. And given where we're sitting, just about eight o'clock right now, if you could limit your comments to three to four minutes, with four being the cutoff, we will be able to move through this. We would remind you, if your testimony is something that's already been said, you might look at something that's unique to your feelings so that we don't have the same comment coming over and over. And so I'm going to start with Dan Hilbert. If Dan would please come up?
Yes, I will.
And if you would state your, well, we've got your, we've got the information up here. So go ahead, Dan.
Okay, my comment is in regard to the ordinance. I'm one hundred percent against it. Just because some people don't like to carry out their groceries in plastic bags doesn't mean that they should deny everyone else the convenience of using plastic bags. I like plastic bags because they act as a raincoat for my groceries. I can carry four or five bags out to the car without having to worry about getting my groceries wet. The use of paper bags are notorious for getting wet and then spilling its contents in the trunk or on the floor or on the pavement. Before plastic bags arrived, grocery stores provided carryout boys because paper bags can be cumbersome and difficult to handle. I can carry six, six of those bags without no problem. Plus, paper bags become a nuisance and just lie around the house and they can be a fire hazard. I practice good stewardship and return all my plastic bags to the recycling bin. So I have a weak supply of other plastic items. What are you going to do, ban all these? You know, I mean. Animal items are packaged all the time in plastic. What are you going to do? You know, ban all of those? I'm just one customer, think of four or five in the family. How, how much trash are they taking out of that store? I mean, one plast, one or two plastic bags, is that going to really make a world of difference? Is that going to save our planet? It is unrealistic expectation to think that refraining from using one form of plastic is going to make a difference. Ocean-going vessels disperse plastics in copious amounts, especially the cruise industry. Navies all around the globe routinely throw out plastic wrappers into the ocean. Luxury yachts throw out their plastic furniture. Banning plastic bags for the purpose of carrying out groceries is not the solution to the pollution. I suggest a citywide referendum on this issue to see if the people really want this ordinance to become a law. Meanwhile, the city council might want to withhold any more funds to zero waste pending the outcome of a vote. If you really want to cut down on waste, try eating less. It might save you because if aliens ever landed here and developed a taste for human flesh, those who are overweight might be at a disadvantage because they'd be easy to catch. Okay, that's all I have.
And any questions for Dan?
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you for your testimony, Dan.
All right.
Margaret Cross?
My show on tell as well. You're in for a treat tonight, I think. My name is Margaret Cross and I live at one-one-zero-two Southwest Russ Lane in McMinnville. I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight. I do support passage of an ordinance that would ban the plastic grocery bags. I think it's important. If we value the stewardship of the earth, we really shouldn't be using them. And in reference to the person who preceded me, I, I have to beg to differ. It's a piece here and a piece there and a piece over here and pretty soon you've got And pretty soon you've got a problem and we have a problem. There are many, many options to plastic bags. My little show and tell here. We can use cloth, we can use nylon, these little things. You can use cotton, you can use a hemp kind of thing. You can use these heavy-duty plastic bags that last for years. Or my trusty basket, I've been using this for 30 years. It's like part of the family. They don't wear out, uh, they don't pollute. You can wash most of these things. They're lightweight, they're easy to carry, they protect the food from getting, getting wet. Even the plastic one, it is plastic, but it doesn't end up in landfills. It doesn't clog drains, it doesn't get eaten by seagulls and blow down the highway. So what's not to like, really? I think the biggest objection you're going to hear from people that oppose this is the question of convenience. And I can't argue with the fact that it's very convenient to have these quote "free", and that's a quote unquote for, you know, recording here, these free plastic bags that you can later use to pick up dog poop or line a wastebasket or use for surplus zucchini or as a rain hat or something. But I think it comes down to whether personal convenience has the same weight and presents a strong argument when weighed against the long-term, both the short-term and long-term good of the community and, uh, the generations to come. You know, when seat belts were first proposed, they were opposed fiercely because they were an inconvenience. At the uproar about an inconvenience went on for a long time. Nobody even thinks about it now. It's just the norm. It's what we do. And I think that's really where we're at now. We can change our ways, we can do things differently. We know that birds and animals ingest this plastic and choke to death. We know that plastic garbage, uh, grocery bags lie trapped by the ton in landfills. We see the unsightly litter that invades our fields and our roadsides. Farmers face unnecessary costs when plastic gets bailed into their crops. Merchants merit the cost. And this plastic never degrades. It never goes away. I, I don't know why the merchants have borne this cost so patiently all these years when we have perfectly viable and reasonable alternatives. So I really don't think personal convenience is a legitimate argument. At some point, government has the responsibility to act for the long-term common good of the community. And I think we're at that point. We don't need plastic bags. There are alternatives that are environmentally friendly. These alternatives are cost-effective. And I like to believe we're capable of learning or relearning, as the case may be, better ways of doing things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Margaret.
Good evening. I'm here, when I first read in the newspaper, that was the first time I had seen that this was-
Could you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Mm-hmm. That this was being considered. And I'm here to say I oppose the voting positive on the ordinance of imposing the environmental beliefs on, on us, the general public, that takes away our rights to make the decision whether we use a cloth bag or a heavier plastic bag, that the heavier plastic bag may also end up in, if it gets a hole or is ruined with meats or whatever, can also end up in the landfills. So you take away one, you'll get another. And you take away our rights. I ask that you oppose the ordinance, not pass it, and let us have our right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Is it, go ahead.
We appreciate that this is an issue that will likely engender strong emotions on either side. To avoid this turning into a rally on one side or the other, we would ask that you maintain decorum, not applaud during either side's testimony in order to keep this from getting out of hand. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is it Anna Lee Germaine? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Anna Lee Germaine. I live in McMinnville. And I would like to speak in favor of the, uh, what we're calling the Better Bagging Movement. You will hear opinions and data in support and against the measure. And you are charged with making a decision that will, in the future, be viewed as an important baby step in the direction of a sustainable and responsible city government. Of course, um, the issue of waste management is a global tragedy, not just local. And this ordinance is a very small bite into the problem. A friend of our city quotes Mother Teresa as saying, "I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the waters to create many ripples." I think that's where we're at now. We can cast that stone and we can begin the ripple effect. I ask you to examine and consider the motivations of those testifying today. The proposed ordinance would require behavior change in us. I confess that if this passes, and I hope it does, I will probably end up with a couple of dollars of bag charges because I have to remember and I will probably forget my bags and forget to put them in the car. But I am confident that even an oldie-moldie like me can learn this new trick. Please think about our children, our future city and Mother Earth when you form your decision. I have a bottle of champagne on hand to celebrate your unanimous approval of the Bag It Better ordinance when it does come to a vote. May I approach and provide a picture page for my next few comments?
Well, you, you answered my Walmart question from last time.
So in order to educate myself on this topic, I went to Carvalis and I visited some stores. I first stopped at Walmart and that's the green page. I spoke to the manager and asked about the store's adaptation to the city's single-use bag ban. He said their adaptations were minimal and he knows of no fiscal impact on the store. Their prices were not raised in response. He acknowledged that there were grumbles at first while people got used to the measure. But they are now only heard from the people who are the out-of-town visitors. You'll see that they have a very easy system of making a basket that goes right on the carousel that's already ubiquitous in every Walmart store. Next, I visited an office supply store. The manager said she knows of no fiscal impact and there was no change in their prices as a result. On the second page is pictures of my visits to grocery outlets. And they have adapted to the bag requirements by providing several options.
Four minutes.
Okay.
They make boxes and bags available. And you can see by the picture that they have two qualities of bags.
Anna Lee, any questions? Thank you for your, your testimony.
Oh, I have a bag sample of what they have.
Again, thank you. Is it Jerry Hunter?
Carvalis has the 2.25 mil.
I thought you were just that good. I'm like, man, he's got sense of humor.
Jerry, good to see you.
Good evening, good to see you. I'd like to thank the council for hearing public testimony on this. And I come as several entities, a food vendor of both hot and cold-prepared foods, vendor at numerous retail fairs in the area and as a consumer. And I'll just keep my remarks to, I'm fully in favor of the ordinance and I hope to see it pass.
Any questions for Jerry?
Are you worried about the, any takeout business being affected by this?
Uh, there's exemptions for hot takeout. I'm not concerned like that and would honestly seek to eliminate all the plastic anyway. And in our establishments, we're well along that path. And I don't really think they need to be the only way to get things from place to place.
Thank you. Thanks, Jerry.
Um, my commentary is similar. I've lived in Yamhill County the majority of my life. And I own a business here and have, it's a retail business for the last 16 years. And we, um, have always chosen exclusively to use paper bags. And most of my customers choose to carry out their, um, their purchases without a bag. If you just remind them, you know, if you just ask, would you like a bag? Often they will choose to not carry out a bag. I don't think any amount of convenience is worth saddling our children and our grandchildren with what we just saw yesterday driving along the coastline. You know, there was this perfect cutout of this bright yellow grocery outlet bag. I mean, it was great advertising-ish, except it was horrid, you know? So that's, that's my testimony.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you. Is it Malon Werfs? At least I got somebody to rise with it, so.
Hey, I answer to anything close.
Yeah, okay.
My name is Malon Werfs.
Malon Werfs.
And I'm a resident of McMinnville. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. And my first point on the opposition is, I'm sure the city attorney may have a technicality to say I'm wrong, but my belief is the city council has no standing to address this issue. And let me explain my, this point. The city's council's job is to manage the city of McMinnville. Public safety, public infrastructure, public livability, and manage that within the budget of public money. Keyword for this whole thing is "public". My personal transaction in business between me and my grocer or me and somebody else is a personal, private transaction that government has no business interfering in. And, let me check my notes here. I had some notes on where I wanted to go. It's, however, my grocer wants to service his customers is his business. You may regulate some public health inside his establishment, but the financial service transaction is his business, not yours. My next point is, if the people promoting this, I don't know who these people are that are promoting it. I don't know any of you people up here. I'm sure that one of you is a representative of my district. I don't know, I've never seen anybody in my district ever come around representing themselves as, as my city councilman. If, if you have a personal bias towards this one way or the other, more power to you. These people promoting this thing, more power to them. If they don't like plastic bags, by all means, don't use them. By all means, don't patronize the businesses that do use them. That's your choice. Anecdotal example, on my street, there are three elderly widow ladies. Well, let me correct that, two. One moved away last week into a, into an adult foster home. They come home, they were all driving, scares the crud out of me, but they drive. They come home from the grocery store. If I can catch them, I go over and help them in with their groceries. They all use the plastic bags because they, they pack them in small amounts, they hang them on their walkers, that's all they can hold on to. And they make multiple trips to their cars. I can do it in one or two trips, it takes them 10. But they couldn't do it at all without these plastic bags. I know it's just an anecdotal example, but I'm sure that goes on all over the city. It's going to be a hardship on those people. You have so many exemptions in this rule, in this proposed ordinance, that all you're doing is spitting in the ocean. If you really want to address as far as waste stream, address the stuff that already has a, a-
Four minutes, man.
A refund on it. I walk a lot. There are beer cans everywhere. That's the thing. When I worked for the city doing maintenance in the parks, I picked up garbage cans.
We've hit our four minutes.
Full of, full of beer cans. But this isn't an issue for you guys to address.
Thank you for your comments. Any comments from the council or questions? Thank you very much.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the council. I support the proposed Bag It Better program. The only reservation I have about this, I'd like to get that out of the way first, is I, I'm not completely convinced at this point that a city-by-city process of banning these bags is, is the way to go. I, I sent an email to Representative Ron Noble and asked him to introduce a bill in the legislature to make this statewide. I think that, you know, reasonable people can sit down and take the best out of all these ordinances that various cities around the state have, have come up with and, and come up with a plan that would be consistent statewide for the retailers and that everybody, no matter where they're going in the state, just like in California, it's all the same. And, you know, that's my only disagreement. But, you know, in the meantime, if the legislature is not going to act, I hope the city of McMinnville will act. You know, I, I, I agree that this isn't going to save the world or the environment. But, you know, in my experience, there isn't just, you know, it's not like one thing is gonna, gonna solve a, a problem. It's, it's a, a lot of small actions that people take. And, and I think it kind of cheapens the, the meaning of the word "freedom" to talk about the, the right to have a plastic bag as freedom. I mean, it's, you know, so many of those, those plastic bags wind up, you know, in the landfill or don't even get there. They wind up in my backyard because they toss them off the railroad trestle. So I'm, I'm all in favor of this. I think it's, it's a small step, but I think, you know, small steps add up over time. And I, and I think it's, the time has come in McMinnville. Thank you.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. I live at 2461 Southwest Howard Drive. I've been listening to testimony. I am very much for the ordinance. I dream of the day when I go into a retail store such as Winco or Walmart and I see everyone using reusable bags. I bring my bags, sometimes I forget them. I will gladly pay- I will gladly pay the five cents when I forget. But these bags are winding up in our streams, which go to the ocean, which go into the, all the wildlife in the ocean, and goes into our systems as well. And it's not a good thing. I've been listening to some of the opposition and, you know, I've lived in the Northwest now for, what, 17 years? And as I use reusable bags, my groceries, well, they get wet a little bit, but it's not a big deal. The other thing I have to say is one of the people who is against the ordinance was talking about livability. And to me, having a clean environment, a beautiful place to live, where you can go down the road and not see garbage, like one person mentioned, but a lot of that garbage are these bags that don't degrade. I would love to see that. I think our world would be much healthier. Another thing is I'm going to get old. And I plan on having lots of reusable bags that I can have small things, I can put small amounts in lots of reusable bags. So anyway, thank you. Those are my thoughts.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Judy Spinner?
Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Judy Spinner. I live at 1800 Northwest Yelm Street here in Mac. I've learned a great deal this evening. I'm new to all the technicalities pro and con. I'm definitely pro the ordinance. When I first moved up to Oregon, not long afterward, I was sold, I was made aware of a couple of cloth bags at the Carlton Post Office. And they had replicas of the, a couple of postage stamps. And I was so excited. I thought, what a great idea. So I bought them. And at that time, stamps were 37 cents, so you can see how long ago that was. I still have them. I still use them. I wash them. I take pleasure in advertising some of the institutions that I really support, one of which is Legacy Hospice, and I carry that bag and showing the logo to the outside. I take a lot of pride in this, and I think it's because my attitude was formed. Born in the Depression, grew up during World War II. And at World War II, we were all admonished to repair, recycle, reuse, don't waste. So I've kind of grown up with that philosophy. So I think this banning these plastic bags, it caused so much harm. I won't go into it. It's been articulated beautifully earlier. I'm very much in favor of it, and I think it's one small thing we can do to make our city more livable and our world a better place. Thank you.
Any questions for Judy? Thank you. Sage and Arden Basset?
My name is Eden Basset.
My name is Sage Basset. Our address is 5455 Northeast Riverside Drive, McMinnville, Oregon 97128.
And thank you for coming up and testifying before us tonight.
You're welcome.
We usually don't have individuals your age, so we're excited to hear from you.
Okay. Two weeks ago, my brother and I went for a five-minute walk. Based on our findings that day, plastic bags are not the major litter problem. Steve Iverson said that grocery bags are a major litter problem. Seems to us that beer cans and beer bottles is what's luring the roadsides. We found eight beer bottles, 10 beer cans, one beer case, one can of chewing tobacco, three cigarettes, one soda can, three plastic bottles, one injection needle, and countless numbers of shattered beer bottles. Out of all this junk, we found only one grocery store bag. I think that a shattered beer bottle is a bigger threat to wildlife than a child, than a grocery store bag. I encourage you to take a walk on the streets of McMinnville and see for yourself what really is on the sides of the roads before banning grocery store bags. And we use the grocery store bag to collect the trash. They aren't single-use bags. We also use them, like, for science and stuff. We can tie a geograd, a little action figure to it, sorry, and make them parachutes and see like what weights work and stuff like that. So they're multi-use. And that's all.
Any questions? Thanks, you guys. We really appreciate you coming and testifying.
Thank you.
And being a part of the process. Tanya Parker?
Hello. My name's Tana Parker. I live at 6605 Northeast Riverside Drive. I am very pro the ordinance of the Bag It Better campaign. I think it's a very simple thing that we as a community can do to keep a lot of trash out of our landfill. It's more important than ever with all the issues of climate change that we become a more sustainable community and that we lead by example and be the change that we want to see in the world. And so bagging it better is a very positive way that we can teach those values to our fellow community members. And it is a little bit of a change of habit, but it's very rewarding once you start doing it and once you don't have those bags. And it's a little bit out of maybe people's comfort zones because we're used to this convenient thing. But it's a very simple thing that we can do. And reusable bags are everywhere, and they work well, and they're durable, and you can use them over and over again. So I'm very supportive of this ordinance, and I think it's one, a very important step that we can take towards a more sustainable life.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
Jim Kreitzbeater? Kreitzbeater, okay, Jim. Welcome.
Close enough.
Yep. No, we're squared away here.
My name is Jim Kreitzbeater. I live on Northeast 9th Avenue in McMinnville now. I did live out in the country and, yeah, I would agree with people that you find a lot of beer bottles and fast food trash in the ditches. But the plastic bags blow away. And I live down a quarter-mile driveway, and they blow a quarter mile over to our house, you know? And so you don't find them immediately in the ditch because they blow away and are in the trees and the shrubs and stuff throughout the countryside. So I think it'd be a wise decision for the city council to pass this ordinance for the livability of the city and the people in the country too. And I think it's, that it's kind of your, not responsibility, but part of your job to keep moving the city forward, you know? And I think zero waste on this plastic bags issue would be a good way to make another image of McMinnville as moving forward instead of like we've been saying about the landfill being in the Stone Age. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments? And lastly, Ron?
Thank you. Ron Ulisar, 3300 Northwest Hill Road. I was, I'm very much in favor of the Bag It Better proposition here. Recently in California and I, with my family. And at the grocery checkout, indeed, there was, they wanted to ask, they asked if I wanted to buy a bag. We wanted to buy bags and a dime each. And no plastic offered. And so it was, I looked around and sure enough, everybody around in the store, I could see they had their cloth bags. So what, the observation that I had was that it drove some good behaviors. Now, they were charging a dime. I don't know that it has to be a dime. I think 5% or 5 cents is on the table here. The other thing, I heard some earlier comments that it takes our rights away, that we can't choose plastic. And indeed, that is true. Also, that government's role is more infrastructure and livability. And I guess I would have to say that the environment is infrastructure and livability. So I would just end there. Many other commenters earlier said what I was going to say, so very eloquently, so I won't repeat them. And so thank you for hearing us out tonight.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions or comments for Ron? Thank you. We are at the end of those that have signed up. Are there any one else that would like to come up and address the council? Go ahead. If you would give your name and sign in at the table, we'll pick up from there.
I was going to refrain from show and tell, but, and commenting, but, thank you, children. My name's Patricia Werfs. I live here in McMinnville. I am opposed to the Bag It Better or whatever else anybody wants to call this campaign. I don't believe, as my husband stated, I also do not believe that this is the job of the city council. It's personal responsibility. You, if you, I'll preface my next comment that I was born and raised in Oregon. If you want to be like California, if you want to be like Portland, if you want to be like Eugene or any other city or any other state in this country, you're certainly welcome to go live where you want to. Personally, I have been recycling, reusing, and I will use this particular bag as a demonstration, although this is cloth. I started 50 years ago using a bag like this in a foreign country, made out of plastic, that lasted me many, many, many years. If you insist upon knuckling under or giving in or whatever term anybody wants to use to pass an ordinance in McMinnville to bag the bags that are called single-use bags, please do not replace them. Suggest, as has been suggested by Zero Waste, a bag of 4 mil that is plastic, that is not biodegradable, that is not going to be easily cleanable as are cloth bags of any size or shape. Promote through education, as one person indicated, the reduce, reduce what you bring in your house. It's, I don't believe it is the city council in any city's responsibility to decide what is the acceptable, appropriate type of plastic bag for any store, with all the exceptions that have been put out. You're either going to do it or you're not. I don't go with if you're on WIC or if you're on SNAP or if you're on this or if you're on that. I reuse bags. I like the cloth that you can wash them in the washing machine. If I'm going to get a heavy-duty plastic bag that is only going to be cleanable by using bleach on it or some other type of strong cleaner or a single-use sanitary wipe of some kind to clean that bag, you're not accomplishing a re-education if that is what you want to do, is re-educate people, encourage people to use their own bags of whatever time or whatever kind they currently have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify for you, Linda, that we do not have the 4 mil in here. It, there was a, there was a bag that, according to the sample that was given at the last city council meeting and passed around, that was used as a, for example, this bag. Yes, and, and...
This is 2.2.
You are absolutely correct that that bag was given as an example, but then the conversation that ensued was very parallel to what you're saying right now, which is if this is going to move forward in the form of an ordinance, it's going to be for all of the plastic bags at the checkout station. So the council didn't choose to move forward with that 4 mil option. I'm just, I'm just saying that that conversation paralleled what you just said now.
Has it been, and I haven't, I hadn't thought about this until tonight as far as the mil. The bag this lady brought, if that is a plastic bag similar to ones you can buy at almost any of the stores, do we know what mil that is? Does anybody have?
I think that I might be speaking out of turn because, but I believe the bag that she presented is a purchased reusable bag.
Right, right. And that was one of the other suggestions, was purchase a reusable bag such as...
I was just trying to show there are many options.
Yeah.
To one-use bag.
Right.
I actually like one basket the best.
But that's one, that's another misnomer on this single-use bag. Those aren't single-use bags for some people. And maybe that's how they're made, designed to be a single-use bag. But there's not an individual that I know that that's a single-use bag.
So understanding that there was, that there was an issue there to be addressed by councilor Drapkin, we're beyond that now and beyond the four minutes for testimony.
I know that. I was just...
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. One more? And if you'd sign in and state your name?
Good evening. My name's John Harbor. We live at 21730 Southwest Westview Road up in the Eagle Point subdivision. My wife and I arrived here in McMinnville approximately 10 years ago. And as we were living in McMinnville and commuting from work where we live out in the beautiful countryside, I noticed all the trash and I felt compelled to write a letter to the editor of the News Register about the trash and how we had traveled here from Indianapolis, Indiana, which is a city that's of much larger size. And I had noticed that the trash was an equal amount, it seemed like, in ditches, in streams, as a gentleman mentioned earlier, hanging in trees and... as a gentleman mentioned earlier, hanging in trees, and, and they look like, almost like Christmas ornaments in the trees out, out in our area. People like to use those as dumpsters, for some reason, and it's very disconcerting to drive through that. I also want to mention that, as we lived here longer, we saw the community come together, and they send out people who pick up litter, the litter patrol, the people who go along the oceanfront and pick up the trash on the ocean. What a wonderful thing. What, what a positive thing to do for our environment. As we're attacked, our environment is attacked constantly by large corporations messing, fouling our waterways, polluting our air. This is a very simple and, and very easy thing for a small town like McMinnville to do. And I believe that it is the city council and all governments' job to, to take care of the common good. And obviously, the common good is for our, our environment, the place we live, the place we exist, to not be full of trash, and especially trash that won't decompose. People will change their habits, they, they do that. And, and I would encourage the, the council to, to pass this ordinance, so that they can assist those people in changing their habits now, and, and making our environment a, a good place to, to just exist in. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and thank the citizens of McMinnville for sharing their, their thoughts on this important item that's before us right now. This is one that we've had many discussions, it's not something that's just come overnight, but we've had many discussions, and we are excited to hear both sides of your opinions tonight, so thank you. With that being said, we're to a point right now where we're going to have a discussion among the councilors, and, and, and then give a direction to David to bring back an ordinance, or not an ordinance for consideration, on February 14th. So I'm going to open it up to the councilors, and if I may, Alan, I'm just going to start there, and we'll work our way down, and have an open discussion, but we'll just start and move down.
Okay. Well, it's been a wonderful conversation with you all. I think it's great that so many have come together on this issue, and presenting compelling arguments and testimony on both sides of the issue. And that, they're very compelling. Government interference has been listed. Who wants that, since we are the government, pretty much? Bringing people together for a common good. It is, these small steps add up to big results eventually. A better way, other organizations are stepping up, such as Recology, and Zero Waste, and others, who are trying to bring about change, and, and we are talking about change, for sure. And it's all good. I, I think that, just from hearing everybody, and, and the mayor mentioned something, that we just, as a community, coming together like this civilly, is a great example, and it makes our day, and it's wonderful to see and appreciate, everybody that's, that's testified. And it may not go your way, or that way, or nothing, but it's, it's been great, and thank you very much. I, I do have feelings about it, that, that the ban should be approved. I do have other feelings, that yes, that it will be a little bit of a change of habits, and I, I think it's a good thing. I think it'll bring our community together, and, and, and better, step by step, by step by step. And one of the testimonies was that it's not going to change the world overnight, and it's not. But it is another step where we can feel a little bit more interactive with each other, and helping each other to, to move forward. And so, right now, I would say that I, I am going along with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Remy?
I would echo that it's nice to have had a real conversation tonight, and to hear things from people that have various and, and very strong feelings. It is reassuring to know that all public discourse has not been lost, so I encourage those conversations to continue. I do feel that the role of the city council is to protect both the city of McMinnville and our resources, and while I heard the concerns about infringement on personal rights, we are not telling individuals what types of bags they can use, or where they can shop, or what they can purchase or do within their own homes. I think a passing of this ordinance, in actuality, what we are doing is, is refusing to tolerate the use of a known pollutant, that will ultimately be discharged into our local environment. The city does monitor water discharge from certain types of businesses, solid discharge from certain types of businesses, air particulate. We monitor noise, and only allow for a certain amount of noise pollution and, and air pollution to take place. And I think that we are in our rights to set a restriction on what types of discharge will be tolerated from certain types of businesses. Now, this is, as was pointed out, it is not an outright ban on all plastic bags, and, and I think that that actually falls in line with those other things I brought up. Some businesses are allowed to use materials that are caustic, or, or extremely acidic, but only in measured amounts. Some businesses create some hazardous waste in, in the work that they do, but that too is limited, so that there will not be an overall larger impact on the community. And again, air pollution, noise pollution, these are things that the city tolerates to a certain limit, and, and has a monitored and measured response to. So for all of these, these reasons, I feel that we are acting within our rights, and really, we're, we are doing what we have been charged to do, by looking at this. We've gotten overly supportive feedback from the retailers, and those retailers really will be those that are, are greatly affected. And, and, and so I, those are my thoughts, and thank you. And thank you again for everybody that came out this evening.
Thank you, Remy. Wendy?
I would like to support, or also support, the idea that we have, sure. I'd like to also thank everybody for coming out. One of the benefits that we have, being in McMinnville, is we have citizens who really care about what happens in our town, and not all communities have that, so I really thank everybody for coming. And I feel that together, we make better decisions, when we have everybody able to voice their opinions about different topics that come up. I will also say that, as a government, I feel like one of our roles is to take in all that information and try to make decisions that will help with, will provide for the greatest public good for our town. One of our responsibilities is to decide what businesses who come and locate here, how they function within our community. And part of that is how the, the bags that they use. So I do think it is within our role as, as government, to be able to address that. I think, feel that this is a really good step that we can make. Plastic bags are not biodegradable, we do have challenges as a city with our resource stream that is going to landfills, and I think it's a good role for us to play, to make a decision that helps to reduce that in any way that we can, and this is the way that we are able to do that. The business community, I've been, I'm impressed to hear, and glad to hear, that they don't feel like it's a, too much of a burden for them to be able to make this change. And although change is hard, when you're trying to change habits, I think that it is an opportunity for us to really think about our own personal habits, and to make changes as well. So I'm in support of the ordinance, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming and giving their input. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's go to Adam.
Well, first off, I would just like to thank everybody for coming out. For the last four years, I've been sitting out there in the audience, and coming and testifying for a number of things, and I really appreciate all the involvement, especially the kids. But overall, it was great to have dialogue from everyone. The written testimony we got was very insightful, and overall, I, I would say that, you know, philosophically, I, I think that there is limits that government should take, but from where we've stood as a city on the landfill expansion, and what we've promoted as a city is livability and whatnot, I, I do feel that it is time for the rubber to meet the road, and us to pass a ban of this nature. That being said, I think it should be passed for everybody, there shouldn't be exemptions. It's been noted in many news articles, that there's about 40 or 50% of families on free or reduced lunches in the school district locally, so are we going to enact this ban for 50% of the city, or are we going to enact it for everybody? I think that it's a, it's a change of behavior, and if we're going to promote recycling and reusable bags, we need to promote it to everybody, and not, not give it out for some.
Thank you, Adam. Kevin?
Well, I have to say, I'm, I'm really amazed at the quality of testimony. Often when we have things that are this kind of polarizing, it can be kind of contentious, and I was writing notes the whole time, and honestly, every, every comment that was made on, on both sides were really well-founded and well-argued, and I just, as, as a, from sheer, from a scholarly perspective, I just thought it was a fabulous debate tonight. I don't know if you noticed, but there was a young man who was a Boy Scout here, that, he'd been trying to find a good topic to, to kind of participate in, and I'm so glad he came for this event, because this was just fabulous on both sides. And thank you all so much for, for your input tonight. I also want to thank the Bag It Better. Throughout this whole process, they have been so diplomatic, and so gracious, and inclusive, and, and trying to get people here, and get, get people's opinions, and have really been patient with us, because the cogs of government run slowly, and they have just stuck with us, and have just been fabulous. And I just really commend you for your leadership and your approach to this. And I, I was commenting to, to Candace before the meeting, I wish that anyone who had an initiative or an idea was so, so helpful, as you guys were, and took the approach, and the respect that you've shown to the other sides as well. It's just, it's just been wonderful, so thank you. I, I am definitely in support of this, this ordinance, and, you know, this is something that my wife has, has placed upon me for many, for many years now, and I was, I was on this side of the room for a long time, because, and this is not a judgment on any of you, but simply myself, I was very lazy. And my wife kept beating me over the head with, you know, you got to bring the bags, you got to bring them in, and I would keep forgetting them, not putting them in the car, and, and so one day, we went into the store, and I forgot the bags, and she made me load up the cart with the cans and everything without the bag, and then load it in the car, and then load the bags in the car in the garage into the house. So I, I know how convenient they are, and, but I've also seen, as I've gone up to the landfill over the years, I, I don't doubt that, that those of you who are opposed to this ban are, are good citizens, and are responsible with the resources that you have, and you, and you use these bags as, as a really important resource, and you do your best to recycle them at the stores, or to dispose of them properly. But I've also noticed that, like, at the stores where you recycle them, if there's any contaminants in that load of bags, they have to throw it out. It's not, it's not a viable recyclable product anymore. If somebody were to put in a bulk food bag in there, the whole, the whole lot is no good. If somebody were to, uh, uh, so that would end up in the landfill, and if you were to go to the landfill, even if you were to put your garbage, your recyclable, those single-use bags in your garbage, if you've ever been up to the landfill, they have these huge trucks that just smash and rake out the garbage all over the place, that are tearing up your garbage bags, and opening up everything. And it helps for breaking down and everything, but when the wind picks up, and I've seen it myself, those bags fly everywhere. In fact, they have crews, full-time, they just walk around the landfill, picking up plastic bags that blow out of the hole. And they don't get them all. And I'm sure Ramsey, he, he lives right next to the Anhele River, which is right next to the landfill, he could tell you what he's pulled out of there. So I, I just, I really believe this is the right time, this is what's best for, for McMinnville, for, for the neighbors, and this is the right step, and I just, I'm definitely in support. And it's, it's a learning process, and I, I, I just ask that you be patient with this, and, 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 and do your best to try to embrace it, because you can really, these single, these reusable bags are, are just such a better product, once you get used to them, and you realize it's just a really, you wonder why you hadn't done it all along. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin, and councilors, thank you. Just one comment that I would have, I think it was eight years ago, as a council, we started educating ourselves on sustainability. And I would be much like Kevin, where I wasn't very educated on sustainability. Matter of fact, I think I'd put my heels in a little bit, but as we have become more educated on sustainability, and then working with zero waste, and I likewise, I'm thankful for your gentle way of coming in and doing some education to us, has brought us to a point where I think tonight, and if I can summarize what I'm hearing around the table, is we're giving David a go-ahead to, to enact that ordinance with the addition that you had, and bring that back to us on the 14th for discussion, and then passage of that, of that ordinance.
Should we discuss? There was another comment brought up about the change to the exceptions. Should we have a discussion?
Yeah, I, I guess I would ask if there are, other than the, the two issues that I raised at the outset, related to the six-month and one-year phased-in implementation periods for large versus small stores, along with adding in the, the one-year, up to one-year hardship provision, and assuming that that has the consensus of the council, I would ask if there was any other specific modifications, based on the testimony tonight, or your own reflections on it, that you would like to see, and if we can get a sense that there's a majority of the council, then I can try to bring back the ordinance that has whatever other changes that you might want to see.
I will say that my understanding is six months, 10,000 square feet or more, an additional six months under 10,000 square feet, and with council or city management approval, an additional six months on request.
Six months for the hardship?
That's what we had discussed last time, so at most, it was 18 months.
Is that anything else that you would like?
Uh, I would just like the exemption removed for WIC and SNAP. I think if we're going to change the, the, the way this, the citizens of the city operate, leaving the grocery store, and it being second nature to use a reusable bag, I, I think that would...
Isn't the exemption on the charge, not on the bag?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
As it's, I, I'll, I'll direct you to it, it's, on, I think that's page two. Yep, on page two of the ordinance there, 5.36.050 exemptions, and it's number four, says that a reusable bag, or recyclable paper bag must be provided at no cost to a customer who is using either vouchers through WIC, or an electronic benefits transfer card, such as Oregon Trail Card, to access SNAP benefits. So it's simply a waiver to the five-cent charge.
Yeah, and I think the five cent, the whole reason for that, as far as Bag It Better presented it, was it's a gentle reminder that, hey, you forgot your bag, and we're trying to promote recycling and reusable bags, so it's a very small fee, but it does remind you that you don't just have a free pass every time you come, and you always forget your bag. So I think that... So I think that, that reminder should be there for everybody.
Yeah, and you know, it's...
I see four nods that's happening.
It's up to the retailers, too. If, if they want to waive that themselves, that's up to them, like some have and...
Yeah.
And go ahead and, and donate the nickel or whatever.
It says that they can't charge for that.
So there are two ways to do that. One is to eliminate the exception altogether. One is to change the shall to a may to give the retailer the option of waiving the five cents.
I, I'm, I'm a bit sensitive on this one. I just, I, we're making these hardship exemptions for the businesses, but there's also the case where the, the individual, especially maybe not so much with the WIC, but certainly with the, with the Oregon Trail Card, where they won't have any money in their pocket to pay for a bag. So I, I would kind of like to, I think doing the may over the shall is fine, but I would, I wouldn't want to get rid of it completely. And maybe we can revisit it if it looks like it's, there's abuse there, they're just, maybe we can change it down the road. But I don't know, I, I see where you're coming from though, Adam. I just, I, I would hate to be a cashier in that situation where you're, someone's using their card and they just, they don't have the means to do it and...
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sensitive to that as well. I just, I just think if we're trying to promote, you know, reusable bags and recyclability, that it, it needs to be reminded and it needs to be ingrained into all the citizens and not, not just fifty percent of them.
Perhaps using a paper bag in January, they might remember to bring their reusable ones next time. It's not a good product.
Well, Kevin, I have to say, I'm with you. I mean, I'm, what I, what I really like, what this ordinance is achieving, is the banning of the single-use plastic bags. And yes, the, the consequence, then the, the, the ultimate consequence is a, is a change in behavior in trying to get people to use reusable bags. But we are, we are, I, I think that, that there is a sensitivity that needs to be brought forth with that mandatory charge. The plastic bags will not be available for use, so we will still have achieved that. And I, I think that there needs to be a consideration. If you can't afford to buy groceries, there needs to be some consideration in that. And Adam, I completely understand your point, but I, I, I just, I don't know that I can, I can go along with that.
So I'm, I'm hearing a general consensus of changing the shall to may.
To give the option to...
To give the option for the retailer to waive the five cent charge? Or is the...
Oregon Trail only?
Yeah, I mean, I suspect that they will, they will just give them the bag, but yeah. That'd be a pretty, I'm sorry, you can't have a bag, you can't bag your groceries.
And still, they're going to give them the bags.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think even if it's written in, whether it's a shell or a bay or, no, I still think that our retailers in the city are going to just cover it, you know?
Yeah.
I think that it just puts a little bit of spine in the ordinance to make sure that years down the road, we're not just seeing an abundance of paper bags still going out the door when the intent was to go to cloth bags.
Okay, so where are we?
Go with some direction.
May?
I'd be in support of May.
And I'm fine with a may.
Okay.
Me too.
Do you have all that you need, David?
On that one?
Okay.
Yep. There was some discussion about, we did away with all plastic bags in this version of the draft, that there is no plastic bag that would be considered a reusable bag. But I was curious, there were some reusable bags that were being shown that appeared to be some type of synthetic material other than cloth.
So the difference there is that they personally bought it. Like, so that, I think that's still in support of a store wouldn't be giving that.
That's a good point. It was one I was wanting to make earlier is that if, if they're so dead set on using these bags, they can go to, to, you know, cash and carry and get a whole box of them and use them to their liking. It's just, it's about the retailer.
Right.
Right.
Right, so we're not saying that people can't use plastic bags in the city of McMinnville. We're saying that our, the retail, the establishments aren't giving them out at checkout.
Well, a little late in the game for this, but I would not be doing my due diligence if I didn't bring it up. And it seems like this is the time. I did have somebody not, unfortunately, they would not put it in writing, but I did get a verbal berating that fifty thirty-six zero-two-zero A.I., which is the allowance for packaged bulk items such as fruit, vegetables, nuts, grains, candy, or small hardware items, was left included in this. And so I am bringing that to the attention of the council because there was a, it was seen as being not thorough enough.
So we're talking about those bags that are used in the produce department and the bulk area. I think we did talk about that, that that is excluded.
We did.
Right. And also those that would be put around meat, because we read a little bit today that dripping meat in a plastic, in a cloth bag can lead to other types of things. So those bags need to be, but where are we in our...
So, so what was the, what was the comment?
There was a, a lack of understanding as to why the bulk item bags would be allowed. So I'm just bringing that to the attention of the, of the council.
But it is by our desire that that's there because we understand, we just need to tell the story a little better, I would say.
Yeah. I think it's, I think we need to leave that in there.
Yeah.
I mean, there needs to be a way for them to put their produce and their meats and...
I couldn't hear you either.
Sorry. I'm a soft talker, sorry. We're talking about the use, produce bags and bulk goods bags. There was a comment that that was not restrictive enough, that we were leaving that in. And I said that I think we need to leave that in. I think it would create too much of a hardship in stores, how they would bag bulk goods and meats for, for avoiding having meat strip and so...
So David, it seems that, you know, where we have that under section three and...
Two, two-one-A.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. And I, I, you look at the model ordinance that was provided by the Grocers Association, but it's, it's remarkably similar to the one that we have.
There we go.
But yeah, so I'm not, I'm not hearing from the council a desire to change what's there right now. Okay. Very good.
Any further clarification?
We're going to have the draft come back in two weeks at our February meeting.
It's, it's slated then to come back to us on February fourteenth.
Be an extra week.
Thirty-first is a Tuesday.
Okay, so I, I'm only seeing the couple of changes that we talked about here in February.
Okay. Thank you for your discussion. Thank you, councilors. If I may, Patricia Fay, would you stand? Patricia has some cloth bags that she's willing to give away to anyone that would like to start the process with, with cloth bags tonight. So at the end of council or wherever you'd like to disperse those, feel free to do that. Thank you.
My, my understanding is they're available to anyone regardless of how they testified on the...
Okay. Thank you for that process. Sometimes this can take a while, but it is, it's, it's something that's so critical to the democratic process that we're involved in. So we now are down to our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda tonight, we have a resolution, two thousand seventeen-four, a resolution, a resolution of the city of McMinnville accepting the annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, per Oregon revised statute four fifty-seven dot four sixty. Are there any councilors or members of the audience that would have this taken off the consent agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
And a second. It has been moved by Councilor Jeffries and seconded by Councilor Rudin that we accept resolution twenty seventeen-four. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. See that this has passed unanimously. That takes us to our resolutions this evening. And our first resolution is twenty seventeen-five, a resolution delegating public contracting authority to the city manager. So I'll call on City Attorney David Koch to give us a presentation.
I give folks that don't want to stick around for this an opportunity to get up and leave without disturbing the presentation. I, I know folks are riveted by the, no, Tim, you have to stay. Thank you. That is a shall stay, Tim.
Good to meet you.
I'm Harold Jacob.
Harold? It's good to have you here, Tom.
Harold, nice to meet you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a resolution twenty seventeen dash oh-five. This is a part housekeeping, part efficiency in government operations resolution. When the council adopted ordinance five zero zero-nine in August, adopting public contracting rules, it contained a provision that allows the council acting as the local contract review board to delegate some of its powers and responsibilities to the city manager or their designee. So this resolution coming before you tonight would accomplish that by delegating to the city manager authority to solicit quotes, bids, proposals, and other responsive statements for public contracts, and authority to award or amend public contracts up to certain dollar limits without those contracts first needing to come to the council for approval. Within Oregon public contracting law, there are various levels of solicitation, formality in the solicitation process when awarding public contracts. Generally, small public contracts in the range of five to ten thousand dollars, depending on the type of contract, can be awarded without competitive process. Public contracts for goods and services up to one hundred and fifty thousand, or public improvement contracts up to one hundred thousand dollars, may be awarded on the basis of informal solicitation processes like requests for quotes. Whereas contracts over that amount are required to go through a formal sealed bid process that are advertised in the paper and, and have a, a specific deadline for receiving those bids and, and they're, they're kept sealed until the, the deadline. What this would allow is for the, the city manager to approve the award of contracts so long as they are budgeted and, and included within the budget that was approved by the council for each fiscal year, up to half of the informal solicitation limits without needing to bring those to the council. So in this case, it would be, the delegation amount would be up to seventy-five thousand dollars for goods and services contracts, up to fifty thousand dollars for public improvement contracts, and up to one hundred thousand dollars for personal services contracts, to allow certain amendments to those contracts that may come in without needing to bring them to the council, to allow for the award of emergency contracts, provided that if the emergency contracts exceed those above stated limits, that they have to be brought to the council for ratification at, at the next available meeting. And that also allows the city manager to delegate their authority down, down below them to the department head level and beyond so that there can be a tiered system for approving contracts within the city. This does not provide for any waivers of Oregon budget law, which require that all expenditures be budgeted for, nor does it relieve the city manager or their designee from the legal prohibition of approving funds that are not authorized and budgeted and being personally responsible for repaying those expenses if they step outside the line. All public contracts would still be approved by the city attorney, as is our standard practice now. So there is a, a internal control process for that. And so this is coming before you tonight for consideration of resolution delegating authority.
Thank you, David. We had a discussion at our dinner meeting tonight. So any further discussion among the council?
How would council be informed of these decisions? Would they all be after the fact or would they, would there be any information dispensed to council ahead of these contracts?
So the, the reporting to the council would be after the fact, after they've been approved. Right now, there, there are certain contracts that are approved of smaller dollar amounts that are, that are being approved and have historically been approved by the city manager or, or designee. And the, but the typical process is to report them after the fact, once you've delegated authority.
Can we get the, the statements from Marcia in our packet? But they don't really highlight those that are contractors that...
So, so every, so, so this is, this is a good discussion point. Anytime a public agency spends money to receive something in exchange, that is a public contract. Not necessarily a written contract, not necessarily with a contractor, but if the city buys office supplies from Staples or Quill, that is a public contract. It's spending money and receiving goods in exchange for that money, that's a public contract. You're not seeing all of those coming before the council before those expenditures are made because we're operating under an informal delegation.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. And, and, and so the idea here is that, that we're, we're simply recognizing that for efficiency of operations, there, there needs to be some defined limit for what that is. This was found to be consistent with comparable-sized cities within Oregon. We surveyed the five, the five cities larger than us, five cities smaller than us, and found the range to be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars for all contracts. In this case, we, we pegged it to the, what is half of the, the informal solicitation amount.
What is our approval rating? Not the, not our city council approval rating, but what is our, how, the regularity that we approve these contracts a hundred percent of the time when they come before us? Or, or is there a, are, do we not approve them at times?
I'm not aware. You, you work here much longer than me, Candace.
I actually can't think of a time that the council didn't approve a contract. There, there have been some other things that you have chosen not to approve as a group, but the contracts, in my sixteen years, the city attorney always went through.
Well, the, the state procurement processes are set up so rigidly already that once they, you know, if they can jump through all those hoops, by the time they get to the time of approval, there's really no reason not to approve it. It's just, it's a matter of do we want to spend the money or not, not whether or not this is the right vendor or...
Yeah, it's... And, and so what'll, what'll happen is we go through a solicitation process, there may be anywhere from, from three weeks to six weeks between the time that we're ready to award a contract and when it, at, at the, at the extreme end, and when it can come to the council for, for a vote and approval. And so for the smaller contracts, this is a, more about the efficiency of operations within the city than it is about things having to come to the council because there might be some question about whether it's a, it's a legitimate expenditure.
It's a, seems like it's a facilitating type measure and to make some good decision-making processes on the fly. And it does give me a little bit of pause because of we're losing, well, the perception is we're losing a little control, even though we do spend a lot of time over these things and they're basically housekeeping. So I've, I've taken a little, I think number two up there is, should be clarified... So I've taken a little, I think number two up there is, should be clarified to the audience and to the council itself, and you spoke of it, David, was that the amount of the public contract is include, it only goes into effect if the amount of the public contract is included within the city's adopted and approved budget for the fiscal year in which the funds will be spent.
And for that purpose?
Correct.
As well. So basically, we're making the strategic decision and then empowering them to implement the strategic decision based on operationally.
Yeah, and I get that, for sure. So I guess it's just a change that we don't want to let go, and so, but maybe there's a time to let go and hold back, and has anybody had any thoughts about that? No?
Okay.
No, I think it's, I think it's a thought that I had, but understanding that we've already provided the strategic decision and that they need to abide within that, there, it's very operational.
And the funds are already been approved.
And the funds are already earmarked for that purpose. It's just letting them go ahead and implement it without...
Allow them to do their job.
Right, without having to come back to us.
Any more comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilor Stassenz, right?
Yes.
And Councilor Jeffries, that we approve Resolution 2017.5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay, and state that this has been approved unanimously. That takes us to Resolution 2017.6. It's a resolution establishing the revised system development charges, or the SDCs, pertaining to parks and recreation, sanitary sewer, and transportation, and repealing Resolution Number 2007-4 and Section 2 of Resolution 2015-24. And Mike, we'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I would refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet, as well as the resolution that's before you. I've also included a copy of the system development charge ordinance that's contained in municipal code, as well as the prior resolutions that you're repealing this evening. System development charges are currently imposed in McMinnville for transportation, sanitary sewer, and parks and recreation. The purpose of system development charges is to apportion a share of the costs of the impact of development upon the developers. So the burden they're putting on the public infrastructure is shared through system development charges that are then applied to capital improvement projects to expand those systems. So your system development charge ordinance does allow for the annual adjustment of the charges to reflect the increase in construction costs. It's an inflationary factor. The ordinance requires us to use a construction cost index for Seattle/Washington. For calendar year 2016, the increase was 2.2%. So we've applied that 2.2% cost increase to the three system development charges. It's interesting, you noted the two ordinances that are being repealed. One is from 2007, which is the last time that sanitary sewer and parks and recreation system development charges were adjusted, and the second is from 2015, which is the date in which you impose the current transportation system development charge methodology. So with that, unless there are any questions, I did a brief table that shows what the increases translate for the three charges. Sanitary sewer, the rate will go up $63 per dwelling unit. For parks and rec, it will go up $60 per dwelling unit. And for transportation, it will go up $47 per PMP trip. So, and then for larger developments, it'll go up to 2.2% proportionally. So unless there are any questions, the staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion among the council?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. As you talked a little bit about it in our dinner meeting, it's been a long time before, since we've raised these, I don't think we have raised them since they were initiated back 10 years ago, roughly. I don't see any builders or developers out there, so I don't know if there's anybody that wants to come and talk about the increase, because it is an increase. So I guess I'm happy with that. And the reason being, as we were talking about in the dinner meeting, was that because of the recessionary times that we were in, and the building industry really getting hit hard during that time, that there was, there was no increases, even though they were well warranted at the time. They were shelved to a future date, and I guess we're there now. Is that pretty accurate?
I think that's absolutely correct, Alan. The decision was made to hold the rates at the levels they were at through the downturn of the economy, and it's only been recently that those construction costs have been increasing. I'm sure several folks present know the costs of construction are increasing. So the fees that you collect allow you to build capital projects that accommodate the new development, so larger sewer system, larger street network, a park and rec network. As those construction costs of those projects increase, it's appropriate to keep the fees in pace to recover similar amounts through the charges. So the one thing I didn't note is the effective date of this resolution would be July 1st, and so the new fees would apply to building permits applied for on or after July 1st.
Any further discussion?
So Alan, were you asking if people wanted to talk about this?
Is that appropriate, Mayor?
We can take some testimony.
Sure.
JW, if you have a comment.
JW Meligan, 624 Northeast 2nd. I didn't come prepared to talk on this, but I have a problem with system development charges, because I think they're way too high here in McMinnville. I'm just curious, first of all, on the sanitary sewer, what does a homeowner pay to connect to the sewer system to begin with? Because it looks like about a $10,000 charge per house with these increases.
So the current fee per single-family dwelling is $2,870. That will go to $2,932 effective July 1st.
Do they also pay for the connection on top of that?
That is the connection fee.
It's complete. I guess some of it, I think, like to do a shopping center in McMinnville is a half a million dollars, and I don't quite understand that. And a lot of those fees that I've seen the city council adopt here about a year ago or two years ago were based on what other cities charged, not based on what the cost is to the city. So I'm just wondering if you should reevaluate all the charges to see if they were correct to begin with. And the other thing has to do with affordable housing. That's about $10,000 per dwelling. I don't, have you guys made allowances for affordable housing at all in those charges?
We recently passed a resolution.
It did go through? Okay, that's just my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
He raises an interesting point. These aren't to offset the cost of the actual hookup. It's the impact that that establishment has.
The long-range...
Yeah, so it's their way of, it's a way of putting a price on something that is going to be used, you know, it's setting a, I'm trying to think of the word, but it's setting like a, I forget the word. Anyway, it's late.
Mark has a comment.
Mark's going to say it. I'll keep it brief. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington. I have to disagree with my friend JW. I think that the SDC charges in McMinnville are very reasonable. Obviously, nobody wants to pay them. I understand that, and it would be great if we didn't have them, then housing would be, you know, $10,000 more affordable. But the reality is that the city has more costs than these SDCs, or the growth is generating more costs to the city than these FDCs are actually generating. So, I mean, all studies, I think, that have done this that are objective have shown that. So I think this is, at a minimum, what the city should be doing, and I'm very glad that the city is also doing something about, you know, refunding some or all of them for affordable housing projects. Thank you.
And as mentioned, we did have a very thorough discussion on methodology, and came up with, I think, the most appropriate way for methodology as we went through that process. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilor Rudin and seconded by Councilor Garvin that we, that we vote on Resolution 2017-6, and all those in favor may indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Unanimously passed. Resolution 2017-7 is a resolution establish, establishing, revising sanitation sewer user fees and repealing Resolution 2016-3. Mike, if you'd update us on that?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. In 2015, the city council adopted a sanitary sewer rate analysis and equity study that laid out the financial plan for the wastewater system. That adopted analysis anticipates 2.8% rate increases for the next several fiscal years. The rate analysis also included a transition to equity, so that there was better equity among the customer classes. That was a four-year transition between fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 19. So this coming fiscal year will be the third of the four-year transition. The resolution before you this evening adopts the new sanitary sewer user fees with the 2.8% overall rate increase effective July 1st, and repeals the resolution you adopted about a year ago, setting the 2016 rates. So with that, I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mike?
I could comment on this. I, um, how do I say this? This is, this is hard for people to take. Every time I get their bill, it's getting more expensive, and I made the joke during dinner today that my bill, for January, December, January was jaw-dropping. And I know this is going to have an impact on our residents, but it's a necessary thing, and there's no other way to pay for it. And having said that, I think it's important for our residents to know that the sewer rate is based off of the water usage. There's no meter on your toilet. It's a meter on what's going into the house. So if you can serve water and are careful with the way you use water, it will, you can manage these costs. The power, you have the power to manage the expense of this, so, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. And again, this is something that we had much discussion about, and we wanted to phase this in, so it wasn't so catastrophic when we moved it, and so we're just following through with discussions that we've had beforehand. Alan?
Mayor, some of those discussions had to do with commercial versus...
Absolutely.
Residential use and how equitable that is, and so that, it's just a tough one, and there's been testimony that we've gone over and over again, and so the methodology is just something that's been worked out over time and with different testimony of others.
Thank you for those comments. Any further comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Rudin and seconded by Councilor Garvin.
Yeah, that was a silent second.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Those in favor of Resolution 2017-7, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay, and this resolution has passed unanimously. New business tonight, we have a request for a waiver of city noise ordinance from Walt Gall, and so I'm going to turn this over to interim city manager Candace.
I received a, except I loaned it to the mayor, so I'm going to dig through his paperwork to find it. It could be anywhere. It's what I get for scribbling notes to the mayor during the meeting. Here it is. It's on my mobile. Giving those for public access. On January 6th, I received an email from Walt Gall. He is lucky enough that his son is getting married in August this year, and the son and the bride-to-be would like to have a live band outdoors after the wedding ceremony and dinner, I believe. Walt's going to correct me wherever I go wrong. The city does have an ordinance that requires that any time that someone plays amplified music outdoors, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak as loudly as I can. It's not a microphone, it just records. So, so we do have an ordinance that says that if you're going to amplify music outdoors, you need to get the approval of the city council in order to have that take place. The council has considered, in the 16 years that I worked here before I came back as the interim, the council considered maybe five or six of these waivers. So I asked Mr. Gall if he could be here tonight. Of course, he was going to be here anyway, but I asked if he could be here tonight to answer any questions that the council might have, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to, assuming that the council finds no problems. Oh, I should tell you also that Mr. Gall intends to, within no more than 30 days, or within 30 days of the wedding ceremony, he will notify all the neighbors and will, I believe, invite them all to the wedding. I know I invited Remy for you tonight. So the neighborhood will be notified, everybody who will be within the sound distance. And if the council does choose to approve this waiver, if you would direct me, I would write a letter to Mr. Gall, letting him know that he's got the waiver, and that would take care of the issue.
So any discussion among councilors?
Candace, could you talk about the parameters around that? They're letting the neighbors know, are those the only parameters that would co-along with that in the letter?
Yes, in the past, we have tried to ascertain like what a decibel level would be that the sound was going to arrive at and everything, and it's almost impossible to do that. So the council in the past has just requested that the person who is asking for the waiver provide notice to the neighbors.
And what would happen if there was any concern expressed to the city from any neighbors?
Mr. Gall's children's next wedding would have to be quiet.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have any sort of punitive comeback.
I correct just one item?
Uh-oh, what did I mess up? I'm not invited.
Would that might affect the decision?
Walt Gall, 1325 Northeast 16th Street. We intend to invite the neighbors to the music after the wedding.
I had that right, for the wine and hors d'oeuvres, they could come, right?
There'll still be plenty to eat. There's actually, our neighbor has been good enough to do a luau for us, and so we will have a 24-hour buried pig next door, so this is, this is an event. It's not the first time that he's done that, but we've had, the last major party at our house was called the Sentry Party. When I was 51, and my wife Shelley, who's back behind, was 49, we held a Sentry Party. And we had quite a number of people who came, and at that time, we didn't even think to ask for a permit, but this time, rather than, rather than take a risk with our son's wedding, we thought a permit would be appropriate, and it appeared that the council had the authority to make an exception for responsible parties, so I hope I'm responsible.
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you very much.
Can I, if you don't mind, first, congratulations.
Thank you.
Both of you, congratulations. I'm sorry that I didn't realize that you needed this allowance the last time I threw a party with a live band.
It was an excellent band.
And Walt, that leads to my follow-up. What kind of music?
I believe similar rock. Probably, probably a little bit of everything, but it's a, I've heard a tape, it's a very, very good band. You should enjoy it.
I would advise we're not allowed to inquire into the content of the speech in city regulations.
I would only like to note additionally that our neighborhood is a very noise-friendly neighborhood, because we have the high school at the end of the block, so we hear regularly music and other noises coming to us. We are within ear range of the Granery District. We have the railroad at the end of the block, and we hear, every summer, I'm sure Councilor Drapkin hears the go-kart races. And we hear every summer, I'm sure Councilor Drapkin hears the go-kart races for one weekend out of a month, which I've gotten kind of fond of.
And the marching bands.
And the marching bands, yes.
Who also, by the way, do get the waiver every year.
I'll bet.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to add, gathering signatures, I canvassed your street and you guys had very well, good rapport among all your neighbors. And I have no doubt that you're not going to get any complaints.
Thank you.
Okay, with that discussion, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, so Councilor Drapkin and Councilor Stossens has moved and seconded. All in favor, so indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so, so moved. Thank you. We are now to the point where we are at the advice and informational items. We have in your packet the cash and investment report for November 2016. Reports... do we have any reports from councilors? We still have our urban renewal. So we're going to have a busy February 14th. But anything that needs to be shared tonight from committee assignments? Kevin?
The Cog Daniel Dinner's tomorrow night at the Yola Hills campus for Shemekah in Salem. So I'll be there. Anyone else going to be there? Just me? All right, I'll represent.
Thank you, Kevin.
I wear my Big McMinville hat, really big.
Yeah.
Because I'll be the only one there.
Any other reports?
I'll just report that we've got affordable
Housing?
Affordable housing, thank you. Task Force has got a 10 o'clock meeting in the morning at the CDC.
And it's a two-hour meeting as opposed to the usual one?
A two-hour meeting with must be something, some refreshments involved. I don't know, just...
Okay. Department heads, any reports from you? And then we have the monthly building division report.
Big robbery?
With that being said, Tim, did you... anything?
I just wanted to apologize for being late. I'm not sure if you heard or not. I know that Councilor Garvin knows, but there was robbery at the On Point Community Credit Union at 520 this afternoon.
Oh, really?
So that was the reason for me being late and...
How did you know about it, Adam? Where were you at 520 this afternoon? I got this handy little scanner.
He likes to listen to the scanner. But our detectives are working diligently on that with FBI's help, trying to connect the dots and try to figure out who it was.
Anyone hurt?
No one was hurt. And we're still looking for the person that did it, so. Chief Skills did want me to provide an update as far as the hiring process is concerned for the five currently open positions as well. We have two that are going to be starting. They're brand-new people, have no experience at all, so they're going to be needing to go to the academy. They both start on February 21st, where they'll be sworn in. They'll do their orientation and then they go to the academy starting March 20th. Then we have two others that are going to be provided with unconditional job offers. We just have to get them in to get their start dates. I don't have the exact start date yet. And then we have a currently open process on the National Testing Network that we contract with that closes on Friday, that we'll be hoping to fill that fifth position with.
Thank you so much for the update. Okay, I'm going to close the council meeting. And now we are going to move into an Urban Renewal Agency and an Urban Renewal Board Joint Meeting. So Heather, if we've got board members from the Citizens Advisory Committee, if they could come up and sit with us on the sides?
Can you give us a couple of chairs?
Yeah.
Dave's actually a big in radio guy.
We do have a few chairs up here, you guys. We can fill in.
Do you want us up there?
We've got three chairs, so yeah.
Really geek out on this stuff.
Yeah. We're going to have you run the joint meeting. We've already given you enough.
All they're talking about are antennas and frequencies and that and all.
I'm tired, yeah. Now I'm getting a little worried.
Night, guys. Yes, everyone's sick. We don't have a quorum.
And we'll wait just for a few moments. We've lost a counselor or two.
And then, Walt, we did notice the meeting for MIRAC as well. You don't have a quorum, so we can just notice that.
We won't pass any motions, then.
Now we've got...
Well, the resolutions are for URB.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call the joint meeting to order. And announce that Item 2B, Resolution Number 2017-2, accepting the annual financial report for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency will not be considered as a resolution. Rather, a review of the annual financial report will be presented following the five-year strategic plan. And so I'm going to turn some... the time over to Heather for a presentation. Is that correct?
Yes. So, good evening. City Council and your role as Urban Renewal Board members and MIRAC members. I do want to recognize for the record that MIRAC does not have a quorum tonight. We did have several call-in late today with illness, so hopefully they're feeling better. What we wanted to do tonight is bring to you some updates on what MIRAC's been working on, so the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Their role is really sort of to examine the information, conduct deliberation, and bring you recommendations in terms of implementing the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan. So we wanted to talk a little bit about projects that have been undertaken and are underway and then talk about the next five-year strategic plan. So when I look at the Urban Renewal Plans, I always talk about in terms of the projects that are authorized in the plans. So you have... there are 13 projects that are authorized in the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan. They all have approximate amounts that are with them, totaling about $18 million in present value dollars. They've all been... they've all been assigned in terms of implementation at different time periods over the implementation of the plan, which goes to 2040. And then the amount of money associated with that has been indexed forward. So if a project wasn't intended to be implemented until 2035 or something like that, then the maximum indebtedness was calculated based on that index factor, which is... So with all that in total, you have a $30 million plan. One of the projects is debt service and administration, and that has three separate financing allocations associated with it, so I'm showing that today as well. So looking at the projects, we went through a review of them. And there are several of them that are in the Transportation System Bond that passed it recently here at the City of McMinnville. So those are projects that are underway now under that funding source. The Fifth Street Project, First and Second Streets, some aspects of the Downtown Signals Project and the Second Street Project. Not all the projects are being fully implemented through that source, but many of these are being implemented in part or proportionally more than not. Two projects, Fifth Street Project is underway right now, due to be done fairly shortly. And then the First and Second Street Project will get underway here very soon. So those are two projects that are moving forward earlier than planned in the Urban Renewal Plan and funded with the Transportation System Bond. So the other two projects that the Urban Renewal Agency's been working on and funding is the Alpine Avenue Project and also the Development Assistance Programs Project. The Alpine Avenue Project is moving forward in leverage with that Transportation System Bond. There was an opportunity to partner with funds from that and implement half the project in the Urban Renewal Plan. It is Seventh Street to 13th Street. And what's out to bid right now is Seventh Street to 11th Street. So sometime over the lifetime of the plan, we will need to come back and finish the rest of that project. So Alpine Avenue, there's $2.2 million that has been bonded for that through the Urban Renewal Agency. It's the first bond that the Urban Renewal Agency has taken down to fund a project. Urban Renewal is based on bonding from funds to invest in a project that will increase tax-based jobs and implement the comprehensive plan of the city. It is a cost share between Urban Renewal and Transportation Bond. The plan has about $5.3 million allocated to this project in present value dollars. And as I said, there will be two blocks still left to achieve in this project, and so there will still be funds available for that when the cash flow supports it for the city to finish that project. The timeframe right now, as you know, we went out to bid on it. The bids came in higher than we estimated. We went back into some... we went back into the design of the project and worked with the project team on how to reduce the costs associated with it, but not reduce the actual functionality or the aesthetics of the project. So we wanted to still achieve the goals. And then we went out to bid on it again. So it was advertised on January 6th. Mike and his team just held a pre-bid meeting and had good response from contractors on January 18th. The bids will be open on February 2nd and hopefully coming to you for bid award on February 14th. The Development Assistance Project right now is comprised of just a facade improvement grant. You do have some actions in front of you tonight to broaden that program, but that's really a program meant to partner with the private developers and private businesses on two different initiatives. One, to improve or restore the historic stock in the downtown core of the Urban Renewal District. That's the facade improvement grant. And then another is to set up a series of loans that incentivize private development, new construction, and new tax base in the Urban Renewal District. In the calendar year 2016, four grants were awarded. The total of those grants were a little over $5,000. The total of the projects was a little over $12,000. So it's leveraging at a one-to-one leverage for the amount of... for every dollar invested, it's essentially a little bit more than a dollar that's being invested on the private side as well. We budget $10,000 for this annually, and our maximum grant allowance allocation right now in the program is $2,500.
So the facade grants are for the downtown, like the Third Street area, but not Alpine itself?
No, it's for the whole district, but when you look at the intention of the program, it's intending to improve the facades and also to do historic restoration. So one doesn't preclude the other, but that's how they're being delivered and deployed.
Camcraft could apply if they wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Yep, yep. It's open to... all the programs are open to the full... the entire district, which is described here locally as the downtown core and the northeast gateway area, the two areas. So that takes us to the five-year strategic plan. So there's a couple of large transportation projects that were done with the Transportation Bond. And then there was the Alpine Avenue that was able to be done with the bond that we just were able to take down here this year. So the MIRAC got together and started talking about, okay, what's next? What does that mean in terms of how do we move this program forward and plan for the next big project? One of the next projects, if you look at the timeframe that's allocated there, would be the Third Street Streetscape Project. That's designed to be implemented from 2016 to 2022 and has about $2.3 million allocated to it. There's also the ongoing Development Assistance Programs Project, which has $940,000 in the plan authorized to it. And that's meant to be incremental and ongoing throughout the lifespan of the plan. And then MIRAC had a lot of discussion about what are the immediate needs in the downtown area and the northeast gateway area, and public parking came up as a discussion point with that. So those were the three projects that were sort of highlighted that we needed to work on here in the near term, near term being the next five years, and how to move those projects forward and achieve success in implementing them, excuse me. So after looking at the projects in the plan and the timeframe, we then started looking at where are the funds? Are there funds available to move these projects forward? So we did a five-year financial forecast. And what you see here on the screen is the forecast that looks at, we've removed the debt issuance, so our obligations to pay the debt. And then we looked at the forecast for what we expect the increment to be annually. And we did two things. We showed net funds available after removing what we've already been indebted for, and then also a beginning fund balance. So those are the last two columns. So one is what you're achieving in terms of net funds annually, and the other one is what's the aggregate value if they're not spent in that year. And what that shows is two things. You're looking at, is there funds available to move programs forward today? But also, when is the opportunity exist for that annual increment to actually fund another bond so that we can go out and do another large project? So the beginning fund balance, the last column there, shows that there is cash flow in the program today. So there is opportunity to do some small projects, continue to do these small base hits every year and show momentum. But there really isn't, if you look at the net funds available, there really isn't a significant amount in the net funds available to leverage against a bond until you get into 2021 and 2022, where you start seeing about $200,000 coming in in the net funds available. So the larger project is really shifting out to that time period when we will be able to bond again. So MIRAC had a lot of discussions about how do we continue to show momentum? How do we continue to invest? But not invest so much in such a way that we're not... that we're setting up a situation where we can't do a large project down the road in that next five years. So the five-year strategic plan is looking at four really major initiatives. Administration, which is ongoing in the plan. It is a project. It's one of those 13 projects. So there is the opportunity to fund into that. The city has made a value decision not to do so at this time. Then the Development Assistance Program, which is just... which is that facade improvement grant right now, there was discussion about how do we make that a little bit more robust of a program so that we can respond to private development opportunities if they become available over the next five years? Because really, the impetus of this whole program is how do you incentivize that private investment in an area that's not achieving it? Then looking at public parking, what can we do right now that's not a large capital investment, but is able to respond to the parking concerns that are occurring in the district? So as you recently passed the authority to move forward with a contract for utilization study with Rick Williams Consulting, and he will be looking at capacity issues and then making recommendations on management programs as well as future inventory opportunities for public parking in both the northeast gateway area and the downtown. So that study will show us where should we start thinking about the next funding investment for parking to achieve some results. And that was funded actually in this fiscal year and will cross over into next fiscal year as well. So those are the pieces, those top three are the pieces that are sort of those small base hits through the years, through the next five years that aren't really buying down that aggregate fund balance, but is putting momentum out there on the streets so that there's still excitement and investment in the area. And then the Third Street Improvement Project is really that large project that we'll need to plan for for the next bond that we do. And looking at the Third Street Improvement Project, that's a big project. It's something that will take some time to have community dialogue about, to scope what the project is, to look at design for the project. What's the implementation strategy? Doing a street improvement project in your business core is always, you know, a balancing act of needs of construction and needs of the business community. And then the community engagement, this is a very beloved corridor for this community. So it is something that MIRAC's discussions were, we need to take the time, we need to have the community engagement, we need to make sure everyone's moving forward with the project, comfortable with the project, and that's serving the community in the future. And with that, a planning process that would then put us in a position to start construction in 2021 or 2022, if that is the choice of the Urban Renewal Agency. So we put together a roadmap for that Third Street Project. You have it in your staff report. It really... the roadmap is set up in such a way where community engagement is occurring at every milestone through the process over the next four years. There's a recommendation to form a citizen advisory committee, similar to what we've discussed in the past, which has full representation of the community and the stakeholders that would be impacted by this project. There's time built into that roadmap for a really thoughtful and inclusive design. So what does it mean in terms of the design choices made for both above-ground and underground infrastructure and also the frosting elements for the Streetscape? How do you engineer it in such a way that you're engineering for future opportunities? So if you're going to go into the street corridor and impact the business community, do it in such a way where you're only doing it once and you can really serve... community, do it in such a way where you're only doing it once and you can really serve future development opportunities? How do you, how are you sizing all that infrastructure to support both existing conditions and future conditions? With the urban design discussion, I think that's where the community really likes to get engaged because that's what they see. And that's where you have the fun. And it's an opportunity to really talk about how do we invest in such a way that it creates a brand for Third Street? Your brand already exists, but how do you reinforce that brand with the investment that you make? And then putting together the construction documents for this program and then doing, working with McMinnville Downtown Association and the Chamber to look at preparing the business community for the improvement project. That's a very important piece of any project like this. It does take a lot of time to have that dialogue and work with businesses so that they're prepared for the impact. And then making the decision to construct the project. So that's, that really is a four-year dialogue in terms of putting all that design together and the community engagement. It's something that MIRAC feels the opportunity is to start with that now and start setting the table for it with the formation of the CAC and some other, the work, work that we need to do in terms of reviewing the planning history for this project. There is a adopted streetscape plan from 2001, going back, revisiting that, seeing if the assumptions still make sense today, and if there's things that we want to tweak and move forward differently. So that's the five-year strategic plan and the project update that MIRAC's been working on over the last year and a half.
Thank you, Heather. We now are to a point that we're, call for a review of the annual financial report. We went over that in our session tonight. Is there anything that we want to bring up in this meeting, Heather?
No, I just want to put into the record, you did accept it as a city council, which we legally have to do per the ORS. It is an annual report that is, the intention of it is that we report out to the public just how, how much funds are being collected, how they're being spent, and what is the impact to taxing districts, the foregone revenue. So this will be noticed and published in the news register twice. We need to do that before March 1st.
Can I bring up some concerns at this point? So I probably, I apologize actually for not bringing these up sooner, but I have two main concerns, parking and parking, but in different, in different areas. And I'll completely admit that I, I didn't bring up a lot of my concerns, mostly because I operate a business in the urban renewal district and I didn't want to be, I didn't want my comments to be misconstrued as trying to benefit myself. But as things have moved forward, I've discussed this with the mayor, I've discussed this with Heather, and I think it's really important that I take this opportunity to share it with your board as well about specifically the parking considerations or concerns that not just I, but all of my neighbors have in, in correlation to the Alpine Avenue improvement. So, you know, Walt, I know that you represented a property owner there over 10 years ago, and they were trying to mediate parking problems at that time. Well, those concerns have not gone away. If we had a map, I could show you where there's sections of the street where people, quite frankly, park illegally right now. They park illegally because they park head in where they're supposed to be parking parallel. And were they to be parking legally, then even more of the parking in, in the urban renewal, or in this section, the Alpine Avenue area of the urban renewal district would, would go away. Of the businesses, the main businesses that operate in that area currently, almost all of them require their employees to park on personally owned property, or maybe they use a very small amount of street parking. I don't want to give exact numbers because I don't want to misspeak, but I know that IRE has most of their employees park on privately owned property. The Cabinet Shop has most of their employees park on private property. My employees are required to park on privately owned property. And one of the reasons that we have all done this is because we don't have any parking. Currently, we, we have no parking. We have no parking for customers or anybody else that might be coming along. So I have a very serious concern that we, and I'm very happy that there's this parking study that's going to be done, but I'm very nervous about the idea of moving forward with a $2.2 million improvement plan when, without really addressing parking first, because there simply is not any for various circumstances. But without digging too deep, let's just say it's not addressed. Then to parking, our downtown parking, as we all know, has become increasingly difficult. And I'm certainly not opposed to people needing to walk a block or two, but it undoubtedly will only get more and more difficult, especially with this, you know, and we, we have all seen, you know, the plans for this great hotel, which is beautiful, and I think this is wonderful. But even with them providing valley parking, is it, there, there will still be other parking considerations, employee parking, et cetera. And so seeing the parking as the second, second spot in the strategic plan makes me very nervous. I really feel that on both of these, on, on, on this, on the urban renewal district as a whole, I really feel like the, the parking really has to take some priority. Because if we do all this and people can't get there, or it's not convenient enough, they simply won't use everything that, that the city is investing in. And so I'm, again, sorry I haven't brought these concerns up sooner, but I was being perhaps overly cautious and, and I, I hope I'm not bringing them up too late.
Mr. Mayor, just a few preliminary comments. I think with regard to the Alpine project, parking has not been totally ignored. The consultants spent a lot of time talking with property owners, but that was subsequent to the Gateway Project, which was an entire process, which involved also discussions along those lines. Sometimes you have problems which are difficult to solve without making major infrastructure improvements, and that parking may be one of those, both at the Alpine area and in the downtown area. But there may, you know, what we've talked about is, at the MIRAC, is addressing this issue first by getting somebody who knows parking more intimately than we do to study it district-wide and give options and recommendations. But secondarily, and this is just my own personal view, I think that parking is, is a challenge that's going to, that's going to involve some kind of satellite process. In other words, we're going to need to create retail parking in the Alpine District, in my view, by removing employee parking from the Alpine District and moving it over to where it can be transported from that parking, satellite parking into the, into where, into the district where the employees work. And so Salem has had this problem, when I, when I was president of the MDA in the eighties, Salem was adopting a parking management plan which prohibited employees from parking downtown. They, they literally had, their cars would be ticketed with it, I forget what it was at the time, but I wasn't, I think it was a $50 parking ticket in 1987 or eight, for an employee in downtown Salem to park. And that was one of the ways that they dealt with the management of parking, was to, was to prioritize the customers, the retail customers who needed to get to the stores, and create, and create a demand in effect for alternative forms of parking elsewhere outside the immediate core. And I, I don't know, one of the things we've talked about is, is, is the possibility, for instance, of having a parking lot over down in Joe Dancer, where you have a lot of Upland land that's not being utilized or anything right now, and having a, basically having a shuttle that transports people to and from downtown and/or the Alpine area to get to and from their cars, and use that for things like employee parking. However, there are, there may, there's undoubtedly other alternatives. With regard to the Alpine project, I would be loath to see the awarding of that contract somehow delayed on this, because of this issue at this, at this stage of the game. I mean, I think we're pretty committed to a design and a cost and a process, and, and I think that, that I would, I would be disappointed to see the council call a halt of that process in order to step back and say, do we really want to do this if we're going to lose, you know, 25 or 30 parking spaces because of the way the road's going to be developed? Which may, which may occur. I don't know. Do we have a, a, a design number, Mike, of, of any loss of parking in the Alpine District from that project? I've not heard a specific number that I recall.
I, I don't have a specific number. I certainly can research that. There, there is a, a number of on-street parking spaces that will be provided along the corridor. And then we did work with the businesses along the corridor, particularly some that we're using, the Right-Away Now with the nose-in parking that, that Remy described. And since that's going away, we've worked with a few of the businesses for how they're going to manage their parking and, and the changes that they'll be making to accommodate the improvement. So it's been an iterative process, a number of meetings with property owners up and down the corridor. And frankly, I think we have pretty good consensus with those adjacent property owners that the project we're moving forward is, is the best solution for that corridor.
The only other comment I would make is that this is not an issue that's lost on MIRAC. MIRAC's talking about this at just about every meeting. And so it is a matter of importance, which is why we recommended that the council spend urban renewal money to go out and make a, a study from a parking expert who knows how to maximize parking and how to be creative in the approach taken towards parking. And to be strategic, exactly. So, so we're hopeful that, to see something coming back to, to MIRAC and the council within a couple, three months?
The, so the, the study will, will, because we want to be able to hit a shoulder season of tourism as well as Linfield when it's still in session, the study, the utilization data will be collected in May, two days in May, and then he'll have the results to us by the end of July.
Okay, so it's six, seven months?
Yep. Just due to seasonalities.
You want to get the maximum type need.
Uh-huh. But I do want to point, can you put the PowerPoint back up? I do want to point something else out, because I, I think the parking discussion is really important discussion, and there's something that's going on with the urban renewal plan as well, which is, if you notice, the public parking project only has $1 million allocated to it in a 30 mil, in an $18 million plan. That's, that hasn't been indexed forward. That's pretty low for a plan that's addressing a city center redevelopment area for urban renewal. And so I think what's going to happen after we get the parking study done and look at the recommendations and look at our needs, that we're going to have to look at those projects that have been funded through the transportation system bond. That's freeing up some funds in that $18 million budget, and we're going to be looking at reallocating those. And I suspect we'll be having a much more robust discussion about parking and how do we, and our financial needs associated with it. And that will be an amendment to the plan that we'll have to work through, and I see that happening over the next five years too. Because we didn't have funds, a, a lot of funds dedicated to parking, the timeframe for it's curious to me too, it's 2025 and 2032, so it's pushed out there on the horizon. So when the plan was put together, apparently there, there hadn't been the dialogue for investing in new inventory until later in the plan, and obviously that shifted because of need. We're going to have to revisit the timeframe for some of these things as well.
Can I make a comment? I, I am super sensitive to what Remy's saying, and I completely agree, and I, it's, it's hard to, to get super excited about the project because I'm so worried about where we're going to put everybody. And I wasn't as sensitive about it until this, this last summer, I was in Cannon Beach, and, and I thought there was like some sort of like cruise to gut festival going on, like no, this is just a typical day here. And it was midweek. It was insane. There was no place for anyone to park. I was able to park in front of the visitor's center because I had a meeting in there. It's limited for 15 minutes, but they said they wouldn't tell me because I had a meeting in there. But I don't want that to be our downtown. I don't want people just driving around the block and trying to find a place to park. I think you, you make a good point that there is some money already allocated there, but no plan is going to solve this problem, and no study's going to solve the problem. It's going to take a serious amount of financial investment and some acquisitions in order to make this happen. I just think we can't lose sight of that. If we're committed to making that project successful, we have to be committed to the next step of solving the parking problem. And to think that we can do one without the other is, is really foolish, in my opinion.
I agree with that.
So if we're moving down this way, we need to also be, in our minds, committed to also solving the parking problem.
And, and that's why that parking structure, study has taken the premier place, and we're moving with the best that we know. And then, once we get the data and the information, then we can be equipped to make the right kinds of decisions. Again, what Heather has helped MIRAC do is really put that five-year plan together. Before, we were, we were looking and we put this amount of money to the Alpine, and then we says, we're way down the way, road before we're going to have additional. What we've done now is put that five-year timeline so we can really be working and planning towards that.
I, I just make the warning that we need to realize that we are, we are planning for future expenditures on a parking solution if we are moving forward with this. I just think we need to be mindful of that. I'd hate for us to get down this road and then for us, as Alan said earlier, kind of be swept into these costs that we're not really comfortable with. Like, we need to be comfortable with those costs today.
Any other dialogue? Remy? Thank you. We, we've had quite a bit of discussion, you and I, and you and Heather, and, I mean, I, I have my feet on the pavement, so I know exactly what she's talking about. And, you know, if it grows too much, then it stifles everything and business, so. But the intent of that, the intent of that study is to hopefully make us more knowledgeable.
Mr. Mayor, the only other comment I'd make that kind of dovetails into this is the, the wayfinding study that Visit McMinnville has, has kind of championed, is I think that is a piece to it too, that we're, we are talking about satellite parking, and we're talking about how do people come into our city? How do we direct them to these various areas? But I think that study will also help bring this all together because we do need to be strategic about it. You mentioned a large hotel project downtown, obviously that became public. That will speed up the process to generate some additional urban renewal dollars that could be used for additional parking. But what I think we're all saying is we need to be strategic about it and not necessarily jump into it. We go over the parking study, and the wayfinding study also, I think, is very important with how, we can't throw up a parking structure and say we solved the problem. We, we have to be strategic about where it goes and how is that going to impact people? How do they get to their ultimate destination?
Any other discussions before we go into some resolutions? Heather, from your perspective, has this?
Um, so from my perspective, I'm assuming, based on the dialogue, that you're comfortable with MIRAC continuing the discussion of setting the stage for that Third Street project and bringing some recommendations to you for that in terms of the CAC and some other initial first steps?
Okay.
Okay.
And Heather, I want to thank you for a very excellent report, very good summary of the MIRAC process and, and your assistance in organizing it and summarizing it has been invaluable.
Thank you.
Also, with strategic management, you've brought real clarity around how to organize all of these projects that we have before us with regards to how the advisory committee discusses things. It's been invaluable.
Great, thank you.
I, I would echo that, but I would also thank those on the MIRAC board for a, a group that really, it's, it's a pleasure to be associated with. We, we've gotten a lot done over the last couple of years beyond, I think, what we thought we could do.
It's starting to pick up, for sure.
It is. And, and then with Heather on board and the refinement of, of focus, it just continues to be a joy to be a part of all of this. Okay, so I'm, where we're at right now is, any other comments from the joint meeting? I think council, have you gotten a sense of where we are with, with the good work that MIRAC has? that MIRAC has done? Okay, I think this is timely and it's good.
Let me say, I, I, my concerns are quite genuine and certainly I didn't mean for them to come across as a negative, certainly not on, on the work of the board or, or on, on, on your behalf either. I, I recognize the incredible effort and, and work and great work that has gone into that, so I just want to make sure that I know, you know how much I appreciate all of this and, and being able to see this laid out.
And let me just comment that when I, when I first started my involvement with the downtown movement in 1983, the problem was too much available parking. And vacant buildings. And so, so there, it's a good problem to have too much demand, and so you got to respond to it in a rational and kind of prudent way, but I'd rather have the problem of too much need than not enough demand for our, for our businesses.
Thank you, Walt. You do have some real perspective there. Okay, so now we're dealing with the Urban Renewal Agency and we have two resolutions that we need to do tonight. And so Resolution 2017-1, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board authorizing the city manager or designee to contribute $8,000 towards the McMinnville, McMinnville wayfinding study. We've had discussion at the dinner meeting tonight, and I think we brought the, the Urban Renewal Board up to speed on that. So any, anything further, Heather, that you'd like to share from that perspective?
Yeah, so I just wanted, one, I wanted to apologize because I didn't feel I represented it very well at the dinner meeting, and that's on me. But, so I, we just walked through the list of projects that are in the plan, and each project is described in terms of the elements of those projects. There's several street transportation projects in the plan, and all of those street transportation projects have a component of directional signage. So when MIRAC was talking about the opportunity to partner with these other groups that are coming together and collectively funding a wayfinding plan, they felt there was an opportunity to leverage into that to achieve some of those components and those projects that are in the plan. So the $8,000 would be coming from those different projects.
And Candace and I having an opportunity to be on MIRAC for the last little while and the wayfinding committee, we've been very involved in this process. I'm looking around the table. It, it's just been, it's been a great, it's been a great committee. Again, another group of individuals that are passionate to, to get us to where we need to go. So any questions or concerns from the council on this resolution? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Counselor Drabkin and seconded by Counselor Stassenz. All those in favor may signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by nay? This motion has passed unanimously. Okay, we have a second resolution tonight, 2017-3, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board approving the development of a property development assistance program to be used in the urban renewal area per the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan. Heather's talked about that a bit tonight. Any further information, Heather, you'd like to get to us on that?
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to give you the specific details of what the authority is in the resolution. So the resolution authorizes MIRAC as the advisory committee to move forward with administering a development loan and grant program that achieves the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and Urban Renewal Plan. So that's putting together the menu list of incentives and toolkits for development. It authorizes, also authorizes, excuse me, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee to make decisions on grants and loans up to $5,000 that meet the program's criteria. So the, the action you took places, the city council in, in regards to public contracting authorities does not descend to urban renewal, and this allows for some administrative decision-making so that we can respond to projects in a timely manner. And then, any grant or loan over $5,000 must then be approved by you as the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board after review and recommendation by the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. So those are the three powers that are embedded in the resolution. MIRAC has been talking about this property development assistance program, some of the tools that other communities have used successfully and what would make sense here in McMinnville. And there's some recommendations for you in terms of the thought process that's being put together. There is a discussion about a free design assistance program, providing up to 10 hours or $1,000 of free design assistance to projects. So oftentimes, people have a hard time visualizing what their investment could do for their property and what type of impact it would make, and this would help them in that process. And it usually leads to more projects and larger projects that are more impactful. There's also the recommendation to put together a development loan and grant program. So right now, it's a facade improvement program. That's existing built tax base. How do we incentivize new development and new tax base? So this development loan grant program is up to 20% of the overall project cost, not to exceed $100,000. However, there is language in there to give discretion to be able to respond to opportunities as they come along, and that would come to you as the Urban Renewal Board to go higher than 20% or $100,000 if funds are available. And that's looking at, there's some sample documents in there that we're still working through, but it's, it's looking at those types of projects where someone's looking to invest in, in the urban renewal area, but perhaps needs some help with either parking, which has come up, or some other infrastructure, public infrastructure that would be on them to invest in to make that project happen. And so that's where the Urban Renewal Agency would come in as a partner on that. That's been used really successful in other urban renewal areas and has a direct return back into the tax base that then supports the program and helps the other taxing districts when we retire out of the urban renewal district. And then the last recommendation is a clawback provision. That's very similar to the discussion we had about the SDCs. So if the city is offering grants, it's a sort of a stewardship of those funds, ensuring that those, that money isn't being used as leverage for a sales transaction in equity to the property owner. So if the property sells within five years on the grants, that, that those funds are then repaid back to the agency, and those are for those smaller grants. All the larger development loans or grants or a combination thereof will have their own independent development agreement because those are typically larger projects with different types of needs and don't really fit neatly into a template. But the clawback provision for those facade improvement grants in many communities because of, once you start investing in an area and it starts generating more real estate investment, those grant programs become self-fulfilling. So the paybacks are paying for the future loans and grants out of that program.
Any further questions or discussion among the council? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselors Stassenz and seconded by Counselor Garvin that we approve Resolution 2017-3. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this resolution has passed unanimously. Any other business that needs to be brought up while we're still in session? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close our meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Again, sorry for the lateness of this evening. We've, we've done a lot tonight. Members of MIRAC, thank you for spending the whole evening with us and, but we did get, we did get music at a wedding taken care of too, so.
And I do thank the council for that.
So thanks, everyone.